Good evening, everybody. We'll bring our Hawaiian Shirt Night Council meeting to order. And so, why don't we start with a roll call? Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. John Kapocha, Mayor.
Here.
Jean Goss, Mayor Pro temp.
Here.
Council members, Rachel Arismendi.
Present.
Denise Del Mar.
Here.
And John Harbity.
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Denise Del Mar will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I just have a really short tonight. You know, August is dark, we don't have any meetings. So I was sort of reflecting back on the last year and a half of council. And so I found this from Henry Ford, and he talks about unity and success. Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, but working together is success. And how I feel about my colleagues up here and all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any recommended changes to the agenda?
Can we say shorten it?
Well, let's just try to move fast and get through it. Oops, I keep doing that, sorry.
I'll move for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull item I out of the consent agenda, if we could.
Okay, item I. Any other suggested modifications?
No, I'll move with that amendment.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, he moved it. You second. Okay, good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes unanimously. We'll remove item I, which is our water quality report, and make it a separate item. Okay, so now, Mayor and City Council, no, approval of the minutes, yes. Okay, I have no changes to the minutes.
No changes either.
Just one quick one, page 24. Six paragraphs down where I'm speaking, the second line should be criterion, not criteria. Sorry.
And then I have a minor typo that I'll pass over to the City Clerk.
Okay, no other changes? Okay, we have a motion.
Move to approve the minutes with the changes recommended.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, none are opposed? Okay, now Mayor and City Council reports, okay? Who'd like to go first?
I will. I spent a lot of time with the library folks the last couple of weeks. I attended the committee along with Rochelle Arismendi to, for the library proposal. And it was a really good subcommittee, a lot of good energy and ideas. And we'll be meeting again in a couple of weeks, we'll be meeting every month. And also, I had the delightful time at the library sleepover with the stuffed animals. I went the next morning to watch the video. And I have to give kudos to all the staff, including Christina, who put the video together. It was so much fun. And the most impressive part for me was just sitting there and listening to all the children just laugh and giggle, and it's just pure joy. And it really made my day and my week. So thank you to the library for that.
I'll go ahead and go next. We had so many events in town over the last couple of weeks. And I won't go over what Councilmember Del Mar said about the library, but I will add my little piece to the sleepover. I claimed that I brought a panda from a friend's son. But, you know, my friend's son couldn't make it, so I just went through the entire thing with my panda, sitting in the front with the kids. And we had a blast. And congratulations to the library staff and everyone that volunteered on that, because that was my first time to that event. And I just learned that the slideshow is on the library website, so I encourage you to see it. I know there's over 100 photos, so please take the time to look at that. Taylor's did a great job with the Customer Appreciation Day on a couple Saturdays ago, I think the 18th. And from what I heard, there were over 600 folks that attended. An amazing turnout, especially considering that's the rain. But it's great to see the support of the town for our local businesses, as well as our open house that we had for a new business, which is, the name is...
Root and Wellness?
Root and Wellness on East Montecito. So Councilmember Harry Beadon was also there, along with Councilmember Del Mar. And Conferences in the Park have been quite amazing. And I think I'll just keep it at that. Oh, one last thing. Applause to the staff for the website. I had to use it today for the first time to get my permit, even though I had to go through the portal. You know, just visually, it looks great, and it's very user-friendly. And I know that residents have been itching for an upgrade. I know we're just really excited about the work that's been done with them.
The Revenue Committee met for the first time last night, and it's a great group, and we had a great conversation to kind of kick things off. And we're going to be meeting twice in August. So the group is very intent on getting some work done over the near term, to get the council a recommendation on the revenue side. So that was very positive. And the mayor and I also attended Assemblymember Holden's Community Advisory Committee meeting. And that was a fair number of people.
Yeah.
Probably, God, I'd say 100 people were there. And I thought that overall, we sat on the local government advisory committee, and I thought it was positive to be able to share with him and his staff some of our priorities and priorities of not only Sierra Madre, but of the region. So that's all I have.
I don't have a report except for a brief statement. My wife, Lisa, is here tonight, I think she's here to support the Little League team, but this is our 31st wedding anniversary. And I don't get to take her out to dinner tonight, so I wanted to tell you I love you, honey, and I'll make it up to you as soon as I possibly can.
Well, this is the second-best thing, going out to dinner. Not at the council meeting, right?
You say so, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, congratulations. Okay, the only thing I've got is just want to, you know, make an announcement or a reminder that work has started on our landscaping in front of City Hall here. And the dedication or kickoff event is going to be August 22nd, so encourage everybody to attend. And Madam City Manager, how much money are we still needing to raise on this?
Eighteen thousand.
Still eighteen thousand? Okay. But anyway, we do have ways for the community to contribute and participate. And so just please come out and learn the ways, or stop in City Hall right at the front desk. You can learn what options you are to buy a brick, or a bench, or to, you know, memorialize your contribution. So I think this is really going to be a great, great thing for Sierra Madre to give us a display about, you know, many options you might have for native landscaping. And there will be on the 22nd some seminars and how-to type sessions. So please mark your calendars and attend. And that's all I've got. Okay, so let's open it up for a public comment, and then we'll get to our presentation here. So for items that are not on the agenda, please, you know, if you'd like to address the council, please do.
Good evening, Mayor Kapocha and council members. Preparedness is not just for earthquakes. How prepared were you when your electricity went out when we had the big windstorm a few years ago? Luckily, our neighboring cities had their power restored after the event, so you could get ice and gas for your car and some basic needs. But what if the area was like Long Beach a couple of weeks ago, when a large swath of that city was without power for five days? Many were not prepared for that type of emergency. And if power is not available for five or even 10 days, would you be prepared? How prepared are you if a disaster hits when you're at work or at a sporting event? Or do you know your family, what would happen to your family if you weren't home? How many of you have ever used a fire extinguisher, or know how to turn off your gas when you smell there's a leak? And how about knowing when or if to enter a building if there was an earthquake or a blast? What would you do if you were ordered to leave your home because of a wildfire in our mountains, or rain so heavy that there was danger of flooding or mudslide? And that's no out-of-the-realm right now, considering this is supposed to be an El Nino year. I know one council member has a CERT-trained family member in the house. How about the rest of you council members? Are you prepared?
Nope.
And how about the city staff and you watching at home? Are you ready? I'm here today on behalf of Sierra Madre CERT Group to advise all citizens of our one-week basic emergency training class, being held all day Saturday, August 15th. Three hours each on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday evenings, that's August 18th through the 20th. And a seven-hour practical on Saturday, the 22nd. That's just one week of your time, just 25 hours to help you to be prepared. Classes are free, you'll receive a backpack with basic equipment when you've finished all five sessions. And you'll have the peace of mind to know that you will be prepared for any disaster that might come along. I heard one man say that he didn't want to take the class because he didn't want to commit in joining one more organization in this city. We would love to have you join our team, but you are not obligated to join when you take the class. What we want you to commit to is to know how to protect yourself, your family, and your neighbors in the event of a major disaster. Grochures are at the back of the room, as well as a poster board in the lobby with registration information. And for you at home, you can call 626-470-7426. Or www.sieramadreemergency, and that's all one word, sierraamadreemergency.org. And on that website, there will be a place for you to reserve your time in the class. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Caroline Brown, Alta Vista Drive. When I was walking in the building, Pat asked me if I would follow her up here and say something about CERT. I said, "Well, I'm talking about something else, but yes, I'll say something about CERT, because I figured I have enough time." We first did CERT training for the city of Sierra Madre through Los Angeles Fire Department. And we probably trained at least 60 or 80 people. And we not only helped here in Sierra Madre, but we would go to other communities. And as she said, you don't have to join a team, but then if you can take care of yourself, you don't need to waste anybody else's time to come take care of you. That's what I wanted to say to help her. Now, what I want to say is to commend, yes, to Councilman Arismendi, that I too am very pleased to see the new website. A lot of work went into that, and it was a long time coming, and I think it serves the city well. So I think the next thing you need to do that will serve the city well is to improve the water billing approach that you have. Billing every other month does not really help people. And the work that I, the research that I was doing to sort of get a better idea about what you're going to be talking later on tonight, pointed out that they recommended, even though those cities might not be doing it either, but they were recommending that you bill monthly, because then a person really can't pay attention to what they're doing. And in Sierra Madre's case, of course, we were conserving early, because we were trying to preserve our wells. And we created a system that I think has always been patently unfair, because across the city, we experience the same climatic conditions, irrespective of if you get your bill and you're trying to conserve a chunk of time over here, or a chunk of time over here, and it overlaps. Every month, every city's billing system overlaps. So with a two-week lag, because I came down when I hadn't received my June bill, and I was going out of town, and I hadn't learned yet how to do it online, but now I know, I was told it would be coming. But the physical bill came even later. I found out how to do it online, but the physical bill came even later. The other thing that I think is crucial that needs to be addressed is the so-called 60-day period is not truly 60 days, it's sometimes 58 to 57 days. And it probably doesn't catch people that are really good at conserving and aren't about to get fined. But three days here, and you're watering the same old way, it could push you up into a category where you get fined. So again, it's an expensive process to change a billing system, but I think it behooves us, because you really, I taught high school for 30 years, and the first thing I learned walking in the door, dealing with high school teenagers, is if you're not fair, you're not getting anywhere. So the thing about this is, has to be fair as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to add a discussion of that previous...
Your name, please, for the record.
Certainly, Mayor. Tom Southwell on Alta Vista Drive, so council members and mayor. My point on it is, I was away last summer, working on a project out of the state, and unfortunately, my automatic sprinkler system had a break in it. And what that did is it poured a lot of water into a certain area, pumping up my water bill. And I wasn't notified about it until two months later, when the bill arrived. And if it had arrived 30 days earlier, I could have caught that earlier. The second problem I had was, more recently, after I had gone to the water billing people in the office, they sent a person to go physically check the meter, because my bill had come up to 500 and some dollars, and it's normally 100. So I was, this was well after my problem. So I said, you know, "Please, can you double-check it?" And they said, "Yes, they would." And they sent somebody to physically go and pull the thing open and look at it. And turns out that he called, he says, "I'm down here at Curb, want to come down and look?" And I came down, and he looked, and the problem was that he was looking at my neighbor's meter. And normally, when you're checking electronically, apparently, all the numbers are lining up. And he wasn't doing that because of my previous problem and my request for double-check it. Anyway, so once it was found out, they got to my meter, checked my bill, and it was $100 instead of the 500. Anyway, I'm only saying this in encouragement to have you really consider a monthly bill that would save problems like mine.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I understand, yeah, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, council members and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you. My name is Adrian Osterich. I am a regional account manager for Y-Green Energy Fund. I'm also a resident of this beautiful city. I don't get to say that very often when I go to these meetings. Y-Green Energy Fund is the nation's largest commercial and multifamily PACE provider, and the second-largest residential PACE provider. If anybody's unfamiliar with PACE, PACE's property-assessed clean energy. PACE financing has no credit score or debt ratio criteria. It is equity-based financing repaid through your property taxes for renewable energy, energy-saving, and water conservation projects. As we all know, Governor Brown's water conservation mandates started this past month, on June 1st. City of Sierra Madre has done a great job of preemptively, you know, putting programs in place. But it has put added pressure on communities to further conservation awareness and enact new policies to ensure community compliance with water conservation mandates. Y-Green's funding of gray water recycling systems, low-flow irrigation, and drought-tolerant landscaping has been a valuable asset to many communities. Water conservation is not just a right-now problem. Californians need to continue to change the way they handle water for the long term. And unfortunately, a lot of those retrofitting projects are expensive. I understand the city of Sierra Madre has at least one PACE provider. I would like to encourage the city to add our program to increase choice for constituents. Additionally, as the number-one commercial multifamily provider, we can offer this type of financing to a whole new group within the city. Y-Green offers the highest level of consumer protections, lowest overall costs, and longest repayment terms. Excellent training for our contractors, and best-in-the-industry quality control. An additional benefit is there is no bulk lien attached to the property. The special tax levy is equal to one year's worth of payments. This allows owners the ability to significantly upgrade the value and utility of their property without affecting the loan-to-value, or impact their future ability to borrow or refinance. Since repayment of PACE financing is made through property taxes, Y-Green needs your approval to conduct business and start assisting the property owners within the city of Sierra Madre. I ask for advice from the city manager's office as to whom to contact in order to bring our program onto the agenda. The city has no costs, no liability, and there's no ongoing staff time required. The benefit to the city of Sierra Madre is significant economic stimulus in the form of job creation, sustainability goals, and increased revenues from permits, lien recordation, and property tax assessments. Any project utilizing Y-Green funds requires contractors to pull necessary permits, which aid cities with their building and planning compliance and business license revenues. Approving Y-Green for the property owners of Sierra Madre is in alignment with your sustainability goals, energy reduction efforts, and will be a valuable asset in the water conservation efforts as well. We just ask for your consideration in approving Y-Green, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Renee Casuta, and I have a protocol question. I have a comment on an item that is on the agenda, and how do I do that?
Yeah, we do have separate public comment for each item on the agenda. So when we bring that up, then your comments will be pertinent to the discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, members of the City Council and the city staff. I'm Father Mike Higgins, here on behalf of the Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. I am here tonight to apologize for something I said at the last meeting. I incorrectly stated that the deletion of a particular clause from the general plan update was not present in the drafts that were reviewed and approved by the Steering Committee and the Planning Commission. At the time, you pointed out to me that I was mistaken. You were right, and I was wrong. A couple of years ago, I wrote a letter to the Sierra Madre neighbors, promising to be transparent and truthful in our efforts to raise money, to support our retired religious and our various mission efforts by selling 20 acres of our 88-acre property. In an effort to live up to that commitment, I am here to admit our mistake and apologize for making it. Also, I wish to congratulate the City Council for your approach, for your approval of the general plan update at your last meeting. And thank the General Plan Advisory Committee and the city staff for their considerable efforts to update this important document. We at Madre de la Rosa wish the council well, as it ushers in a new general plan, and look forward to continuing to work with all of you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wish to speak?
One of our recently-retired volunteer captains, he was on the department for 20 years, was diagnosed with stage-four esophageal cancer. The Firefighters Association has started a fundraising campaign for the family. It's been posted on the city's Facebook, and the firefighters, both active and retired, will be having a fill-the-boot this Thursday and Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 at Kirsten Court, and Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00 at Kirsten Court, and then Sunday at Memorial Park for the Elvis concert. There's also a website, it's www.gofundme.com/ChrisMorrison, so you can donate online. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
My name's David Robinson. I live on Santa Anita Court. And I wanted to talk to you guys about water. I know it's a big topic in the city, and you guys are doing your best with a very difficult situation. People are obviously upset that a lot of times, they can't meet their water allocation targets. I have a neighbor that lives a few doors down that was very water-conscious, and was doing the right thing, low-flush toilets and really conserving water. And then, his water allocation is based on a habit or patterns that he's already conserving.
Mr. Robinson, can I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
We are going to discuss this as a separate agenda item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think your comments would be more pertinent when that comes up.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, would anybody... Okay, would anybody else like to speak? Okay, I'll close public comment, and we'll get on to a presentation. Okay, we have before us Sierra Madre Little League, our eight-and-nine-year-old All-Star team, was the champions of the, what?
District seventeen.
District seventeen. So with that, can we, who is representing the All-Star team? Can we have them come up? And I've got a presentation to, or certificate to give? To all your parents, there is, there will be a photo op opportunity to have a picture taken with the council as well. So maybe we should just do that first. Why don't we do the photo first?
Okay.
Since they're all lined up, and then I'll give the presentation. I mean, we don't win the district seventeen too often, do we? So you guys have represented Sierra Madre well, and so in recognition of that, I've got a certificate here. And it's just in recognition of your tremendous accomplishment as the 2015 eight-and-nine-year-old All-Star champions. So we present this, this twenty-eighth day of July, 2015, Sierra Madre City Council, Mayor John Capocha, Mayor Pro Tem Gene Goss, council members Rochelle Arizmendi, Denise Delmar, and John Heribedian. So who do I give this to?
You and Andrew Martin.
And your name is?
Miesch.
Miesch?
We have representatives of all, five of our All-Star teams here. They all performed tremendously this year, went as deep, I think, as a group as they ever have into the district tournament. So we're super proud of all of them, so we're glad to have them all represented. And we also have All-Star hats to present to the council.
Thank you for continuing to support the community services department. And this is just one beautiful example of how important it is to the youth of our community.
Right on.
Please remember that.
Right on.
Always.
Okay, we'll do it. I'll never forget.
Thanks, Alan.
Thanks, Alan.
And who's going to introduce all the champions for?
Alan is everybody.
Okay.
We can have them introduced.
I know, we should have.
We can have new pictures.
Also have them introduce themselves, but I want them to come up and speak to the microphone, so the people on TV can hear you.
This is small, doesn't fit.
Okay, what's your name?
Bodhi Birch.
I've got one.
Lucas Picciardo.
David Mize.
I want you to also say what position you play, guys.
Cash Maugierd, third.
Third base?
Nicholas Maugierd, left field.
Aaron Peterson, pitcher.
Brian Richmond, super utility man.
Nico Tierney, catcher.
Maxwell Goss, third base.
Andrew Shacklin, outfield.
Drew Beltran, third base.
Coach Danny, I used to be a third baseman.
Nish Desai, coach.
Dave Mize, I was one of the coaches of the nine-ten All-Star team.
George Hines, I was a coach of the eight-nine B-team.
Okay, again, congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Well, that was fun.
What, you're all leaving now? We're just getting to the good stuff. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent calendar now. Items A through K minus item I.
Correct. There are ten items I'll be reading, so, except for item I, which was pulled to be dealt with separately. At one A is adoption of resolution fifteen dash forty-five, approving our demands. At one B is authorizing the mayor's signature on a letter, U.S. Conference of Mayors congressional letter regarding the cost of stormwater compliance. At one C is recommendation that the council award a contract to client first for an IT master plan in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. At one D is adoption of resolution fourteen dash fifty-nine, approving an application to CCHE for the Richardson House Museum Preservation Project. That application would be in the amount of five thousand dollars, and we're requesting that five thousand, it's a hundred-thousand-dollar grant, five thousand in general fund reserves be set aside as our match for that grant, should we be successful. At one E is approval of resolution fifteen dash fifty, adopting amendments to the terms and conditions of employment for part-time employees. You do have revised language that was provided to you this evening, correcting, making, clarifying it, and correcting an error in one of the accorals. And as you're aware, this pertains to a new requirement that we provide paid sick leave for part-time employees. There is a request that sixteen thousand dollars from general fund reserves be allocated to cover the costs of the sick, of the part-time, potential part-time sick leave. But ultimately, the other choice the council has in this matter would be to not allocate any funds at this time, and staff can return it mid-year regarding whether or not there's a need to allocate additional funds for this. At one F is purchase of a police patrol vehicle, authorizing the purchase of it in the amount of forty thousand dollars. At one G is an agreement for exchange of fire protection and rescue services between the Consolidated Fire Protection District of Los Angeles County and the Sierra Madre Fire Department. And the recommendation is to approve the agreement and authorize that it be executed. At one H is a recommendation to award a contract for the replacement of the air conditioning unit to HP Mechanical, and a contract for the associated roof repair. This would be for the public safety building next door. The amount in a not-to-exceed is seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-four for HP Mechanical, and four thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars for SBR Inc. Skipping I, instead going to J, it's a recommendation to accept the existing yucca-trail timber, yucca-trail, the yucca-trail rail and timber debris structure from Los Angeles County Department of Public Works. The city would be accepting the structure and be responsible for maintenance and any potential liability associated with that. One H would be just acceptance of the fiscal year fifteen-sixteen budget document. As you're aware, the council approved the budget, the current fiscal year budget, starting July first, at your June council meeting on this evening tonight. On the agenda tonight is just your acceptance of the document, which is exactly what the council approved at your previous meeting. That concludes staff presentation. We'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, can we, we'll go through each consent calendar item to see if there's any questions before we move on to the next. So is there any questions on A, the warrants? Okay, no questions there. Okay, any questions on B, U.S. Conference of Mayors congressional letter? I have one question on that. Madam City Attorney, looking at the language of what is proposed in legislation, it looks to me like this is going to completely gut the current permit that we're operating under right now for stormwater. Would you, how do you see it?
I wouldn't say that it will gut or override the permit, but what it will do is establish a standard for compliance with the permit. And in particularly, that standard would have to do with fiscal ability and feasibility to comply with the requirements of the permit, should that legislation pass. So neither the letter nor the legislation gave me any pause whatsoever.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions regarding that? It may be that if that passes, we won't be on the hook for the twenty-five million.
Be nice.
Okay, information technology, master plan and audit? I just have a quick comment, it's a long time coming, so I'm glad to see that.
Absolutely.
Okay, resolution fifteen forty-nine for Richardson House. Terms and conditions for the part-time employees. Okay, purchase of the police patrol vehicle. I really would like to have our public safety director come up and give a few comments about that. And we're going to open it for public comment as soon as we get to the end of the consent calendar, so you'll have a chance to comment. Just, if you could, just, again, it just pains me to spend forty thousand dollars on a new car, because I never buy new cars anyway, but.
I'll give you one.
So if you can just kind of help us all, including the public, understand, you know, why we have a need for a new police vehicle.
Happy to do so. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Basically, in this purchase of the police vehicle, we're replacing a 2008 Dodge Charger, which has about a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it right now. The unit itself is in need of some repair, and is basically, would cost more to repair it than to keep it because of the actual amount of the car. It's currently in need of some additional repairs, the electrical system, front suspension, and in the future, the mechanic said that it'll probably need a transmission. All of this is outside of the warranty, which we, when I purchase a vehicle, I get the hundred thousand mile, you know, bumper-to-bumper, so it helps keep the cost down in these vehicles. It is one of the vehicles, out of the five that we have, that does have the highest mileage on it. We have three other vehicles that are considered high-mileage cars as well. This vehicle is, to a certain extent, deemed, at least in our opinion, unreliable for use in police work right now, because our officers, you know, this is their mobile office, and they have to be comfortable that this car's going to start and perform in the manner that it's designed to, so that they can perform their duties out there. The other thing is, keeping up on the fleet and the vehicles, for the public to realize too, is that we have a mutual aid agreement with all the law enforcement agencies in the San Gabriel Valley. We're part of Area D. And when they call for help, we need to send a sergeant and two officers, and they each have to have a vehicle. That takes three cars out. When we're down cars, whether they're in a repair shop, or we're down a vehicle, we are down one patrol vehicle that was never replaced in an accident about a year and a half ago. It does push that chance that we don't even have mark units to patrol our own city. So we do keep our fleet up. We try to rotate the cars around to keep the mileage on. But since we have had some budget restrictions in the last few years, we've gone from, you know, purchasing a police vehicle every year, which was the normal rotation, to every other year, and now they're starting to creep up on mileage and, you know, reliability. So what we're looking at this year is getting another Ford Explorer, which is deemed the, you know, police car of the future. We bought one in 2013. It seems to work very well for the city. And it, I think that they will both, the 2013 and this one, will outlast the performance of the Dodges. They just haven't, you know, lasted the standards that we thought they would, even though we do have a lot of high miles and high idle hours on them. So with that, that's really the, in a nutshell, why we need it, another tool that we need to have.
Chief, follow-up question. The Ford Explorers are now pretty much in law enforcement, considered to be the most durable vehicles available for this purpose.
Yes, in law enforcement, the Ford Explorer is the new standard, much like the Crown Victoria Police Interceptor of years ago that we had for, you know, years. This is the new standard, been tested by the sheriffs, LAPD, the Highway Patrol, they do all the pursuit standards and trainings on that. And I think you are going to see that that is going to be the norm for police vehicles in the future.
And a follow-up to that, for the public's benefit, you know, we come home from work at night, we park our cars, and we get up in the morning, we drive them again, and they sit a lot in the weekend. How does that differ from the typical police car, in terms of its usage?
Well, the typical police car is usually rotated per shift. So, you know, they may have a little downtime while we're in briefing, but pretty much, they're being driven twenty-four hours. And then there's a lot of times when we're out on a scene where the car has to stay, and that's why they clock idle time now, because it's just not the repairs for the high mileage, it's actually that car and that engine that's sitting there idling sometimes hours at a time. So that's really, you know, the difference. These cars are going twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, and that's why they do add up on their mileage.
Thank you.
Director Chief Ginoni, this has also been budgeted, though, for the 2015-2016 budget, correct?
That is correct. It is included in the budget.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Appreciate you taking the time to explain that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, agreement for exchange of fire protection and rescue services. Any questions on that one?
I just want to say, this was a verbal contract, but now we're actually getting in writing.
A real contract, yeah.
And congratulations to the fire department for working so hard to get this. We appreciate it.
Okay, item H, recommendation to award a contract for replacement of the AC and repair the roof. And I just want to say thank you to staff for rebidding it, because I can see we saved some money as a result of doing that, so thank you.
Ditto.
Let's see, item J, the yucca-trail rail and timber debris structure. Any questions about that? Okay, then acceptance of the fiscal year budget document. Okay, we spent an awful lot of time on that budget, so.
We did, it's good for it to be done.
Okay, so with that, I'll open it to public comment for any comments on any item that is on the consent calendar.
Hi, everyone, I'm Renee Casuda, West Carter Avenue. And my only question or comment is about the forty thousand dollar police vehicle. And as everyone, and as is evident from the budget discussions that we all engaged in over months, we're not willing to sacrifice the quality of our policing. But many cities, even LA and Pasadena, have found that it's more effective and less expensive to have policemen on bicycles and on foot. And I know it's very hilly around Sierra Madre, that seems like it would not be bicycle-friendly. However, the electric bicycle assists on hills, and for five thousand dollars, we could probably get three really good-quality electric bikes, and spare batteries to go with them. And we have bike shops in town that I'm sure would help with this. But putting the policeman in touch with the public more has been found to be, lead to more effective policing. So that's my thought on the police vehicle and so on.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to council. I just do have one comment. I really. I really think that, on my opinion, that we shouldn't adjust the budget at this point. And I'd leave that $16,000 out and adjust at the mid-year when we're going to do a budget adjustment anyway. So that's however you guys feel about it, but I'd like to just leave the budget alone as it's published right now.
It's fine with me. We're not actually realizing the expenditures right now.
No.
I'm good with that.
Okay, everybody okay with that? So can we have a motion with that change then? So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Okay, so now, item I, water quality report.
Would you like the Public Works Director on that one, Vice Mayor?
Well, I had some questions that I wanted to get kind of vetted publicly. So I think it would be appropriate to have Director Imman up here. Director Imman, appreciate all you're doing. I appreciate the staff getting this into our consent agenda now, once every month. I think it's going to be the pattern, which reflects the concern we all have with water quality here in town. And we do have a water quality problem still. I think we have seen some improvement, particularly in some parts of town, but we still have a water quality issue. I'm particularly interested in the potential plan that you have worked up to take the MWD water that we are now getting and percolate it into the underground aquifer below us vis-à-vis our spreading ponds. And I'd like, maybe if you could give the public just a general overview of that plan and kind of what it's going to take for us to get approval to go forward with that.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Good evening, Mayor Protem Goss and Mayor Capocha. This water quality report is something, as you mentioned, that's going to be in the council's agenda each month. What we have provided you, just by way of information, is the report that we send to the state on a monthly basis. This is the report in its entirety that Deputy Director Reynoso sends to the state. He is also here to answer any questions that you might have about the report itself. But in regards to your specific question, we have not given up. We are continuing to struggle with the water discoloration issues that we've had, some taste and odor issues that have arisen in recent weeks. So what we are proposing to do is to divert the water that we're getting from our water district through Metropolitan Water District into the spreading basins. What we would do is turn our wells back on, start drawing that well water from the ground, and at the same time, start spreading the water that's being imported. The thought being that percolating that water through the soils into the aquifer would remove those constituents in the imported water that are causing us the issues. Now, in order to do that, we're going to have to get approval from our Water Master Board, the Raymond Basin Management Board. We are also going to have to get approval from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Neither of those approvals are given. The water from Metropolitan does not meet total dissolved solids and sulfates standards for our groundwater basins. So we're going to have to deal with the Regional Board and the Water Master on that particular issue. But there's a good potential, again, no guarantee, but there's a good potential that we'll be successful, particularly in light of the drought, in putting this water into the ground and basically cleaning it up in that fashion. I have made the initial contacts with the Regional Board, and we have had some discussions with the Water Master's Executive Secretary. He has not indicated that he has any issues with our proposal. And the other producer from the East Raymond Basin, City of Arcadia, we've also discussed this concept with them, and they were supportive as well. So we're on the road, but it's going to be probably a couple of months before we really have an answer for certain.
So if we get the answer and it's a positive, let's say by October, would we be able to implement at that time? Or is there another lag time for equipping and prepping? Or what, I guess what I'm getting at, best-case scenario, when could we actually start this new program?
I would guess probably in October, we'd be able to go forward with this. I don't think there's going to be an equipping issue. We can just go back to our wells as-is, our chlorination system as-is. The turnout for putting the water, the imported water into the spreading basins is already there. It was designed into the system when it was built, so we have that flexibility. I must say that we have been advised that if we do that, there may be a short period of more discoloration as the distribution system reacquaints itself with the old water, let's say. But we don't know that for certain at this point. It's just something that I want to raise at this point, so that we're all aware of that going forward.
Just for the benefit of the public, this means that we would effectively be getting rid of the chloramines through the percolation. And then, as we pump the well water, we're now back to chlorination again, which is what we had prior to our problems, which is the benefit we're looking for here if we get lucky, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
We're expecting that the lag time between the water going into the ground and actually reaching the aquifer, that period of several weeks or months, should allow the ammonia portion of that disinfectant to dissipate.
Thank you, Director Imman. Very helpful information that you've provided here, and helpful explanation of this option, which I think sounds good. And the only question I have, other than Mayor Protem's questions, is cost. So would we be paying, we'd be paying that import cost from MWD, and then we'd be paying also the electricity costs and the cost of pumping the water back up? And just for the public's...
And treatment costs.
And treatment costs. So just for the public to know, it will be, although the quality hopefully will be better, switching back to the old disinfectant, there is an added cost, right?
You're absolutely right. One of the ways we've been able to keep the cost down somewhat for importing the water is we're not having to operate our wells. Once we go back to using the wells, we're going to have that energy cost. We're going to have that chlorination cost associated. We may be able to defer the cost of our GAC treatment, because right now, as you see in the report, those water constituents that we've been using the GAC for are now at non-detect levels. So we may be able to save roughly $100,000 a year on the GAC treatment. We will still need to chlorinate, still need to pump that water out of the ground, and that's a cost that we're not seeing right now.
Isn't it also true that we'd have less flushing? There would be flushing, but we'd have less, somewhat less flushing.
There's always going to be flushing. We did flushing per health department requirements long before there was a drought, long before we imported water. But we should see less of the flushing as the water clears up, yes. And we are, by the way, continuing to flush into a water truck. We're using the fire department's water tender, because the Public Works equipment broke down. So we're using, much thanks to the fire department for letting us use their vehicle.
Director Imman, since you are up here, and we had such a thick report from all of the different lab results, if you can just make a general summary or comment about the not-detected MD results throughout the report, I think that would be helpful for the public to hear.
Thank you. What I'd like to do in response to your question is ask Deputy Director Reynoso to address that, because he's actually the one that prepares the report for the state, and he's more familiar with it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you see in the lab samples for the Title 22 VOCs, those are actually done by the Raymond Basin for all the parties in the Raymond Basin. They contract Stetson engineers. Stetson sends one of their personnel out to collect the samples from each of our sources. This would mean all four of our wells and our two tunnels. They send the results into WEC Laboratories, which is a laboratory they contract. And the Title 22 constituents, chemicals are constituents that the EPA and the Department of Water Resources requires us to sample for. And in the most current lab analysis, those chemicals were all non-detect. And a lot of, and those are measured in milligrams per liter, which is parts per million, or even up to parts per trillion.
Thank you. I just have a follow-up question. Thank you for all this information. But I think the real reason that we requested this was because of the murkiness and the coloration of the water. So really, this very last page is probably the most important that I see of the entire report. And when I look at it, I'm just wondering, because you have from June 1, and then you go to June 8, the different areas, is this historical? Like the Michalinda and Mariposa, they have a condition of four, and they have a 3.3 of their beginning iron? It's, you know, then you flush it, and it goes down to, you know, .58, and then it goes back up the next week. But it looks to me like there are very specific areas in the city that have this problem. Have we been looking to see why it is that those areas would have this problem and not, you know, the other areas that have the twos and the...
For example, that's a, I'm glad you pointed that one out. And there's a good reason why that section of pipe sees such high iron. That section of Michalinda has no service connections on it. So there may be one that serves the school there on Michalinda. So when they go back after that week, since there's not a lot of volume of water, that water's just sitting in the pipes, so the iron concentration tends to be higher there. And what we find is where we have older pipes and less volume, we see higher concentrations of iron.
So in those, all those areas, they have older pipes?
In the areas where you see higher concentration of iron, those are typically pipes that are unlined steel pipes, so...
So can you, can we somehow know that? Because I think my concern is, I know that we're getting all the reports, and we're trying to find the big general cause, but when you look at this report, there's obvious areas that are having problems. And I think we need to owe it to our residents to say, yes, you're going to continue to have a problem because of this. You know? And this was, you know, this last page was really kind of telling, because it goes back up, almost the same back at the beginning iron on 6-1 as 6-8. So obviously, it's something in those pipes. So if we kind of knew that, so we could tell our residents, I think they'd like that. And I think you probably follow one of those areas.
Yeah, luckily, mine's in the middle, but yeah.
And what we're hoping is that the treatment process that we've implemented will eventually coat the pipes and harden those mineral deposits so that we see less of that iron precipitating out of the pipes.
And then just one last question. So our end iron, you know, never goes over, you know, one. We never get a one point. So what is, if you know, a good iron?
Below .3.
Below .3, okay. So we don't have hardly any of those.
In order for, in order for us to reach below .3, he would have to flush those areas two or three times as long.
Okay.
So the operator, based on his experience and understanding of the way the water moves in the system, will flush a zone to get the highest chlorine residual and the lowest iron concentration possible.
And you can see that it does. And you can see that the flushing absolutely works, and it gets it down. But then we get it another week later, so...
Because we don't flush as often as we probably should? Because we can't. We get a lot of complaints when we flush.
But this one was flushed on 6-1, and then it was flushed on 6-8, so...
A week later?
A week later, and it goes all the way back up. So anyway, those were my comments, but I appreciate this last page. If we could just keep getting it and kind of targeting those areas, so we can at least have something to tell our residents.
And we do target, when time permits, if we have areas that are areas of concern, we will go back to those areas. Typically, on a Friday, if we finish early, we'll go back to those areas of high concern to make sure that the iron concentrations stay as low as possible.
That's good to know, that you're doing that. Thank you so much.
Just a follow-up question, it's probably a dumb question, but what do we know about those pipes in those areas? Is there anything unusual about them? Are they older? Are they more decrepit?
You know, for example, on Michalinda, we've experienced quite a few more main breaks in the last month. And what we found is that it's a riveted steel pipe, it's paper-thin, it's unlined. So it's got 90 years of iron turbillation that's been built up. And so the pipes are in really bad condition.
Would you say that that's not just in Michalinda, but generally the case in these areas where we have...
Generally the case where we have color issues. The pipes are unlined steel, probably 60 to 90 years old and are in really bad condition.
And what was the useful life of those when they were put in the ground?
With unlined steel pipe, I would estimate maybe 50, 50 years.
50 maximum, so they're almost double. Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you, Assistant Director Reynoso. That was really helpful, and I think just the information included in the staff report, I think is helpful for those that are willing to, you know, spend some time plowing through it to see what we do. So it was enlightening to me to see that as well, so thank you very much.
To mention that if this report gets sent to the health department, it has to be there on or before the 10th of the month. And it gets emailed to them on or before the 10th, and then postdated on or before the 10th. If there was ever a problem that, in the distribution system, they would require us to notify city council.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, thank you. This is a receiv-, oh, yes, I forgot. I need to open this up for a public comment here, so I'll do that right now. And I see that we have some people interested in our water supply here.
Charlie Kissing, 677 Brookside. I've missed a lot of meetings lately, and this question is probably for Bruce or Mr. Reynoso. Since we're going to add water back to our settling basins, is there a further definition on the county timeframe on putting the diverter back into Wilderness Park and the diverter from Arwash into the settling basins? It might have been said, I just haven't heard it lately.
Oh, you're asking about the timeline for completion of the project?
Those projects.
Yeah, okay, we can answer that. Yeah, sure. Okay, who else?
D. Alcorn on Grandview. I may be misinformed, but my impression is that Arcadia hasn't been the best neighbor as far as use of water of the Raymond Basin. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's my understanding, and it may be wrong. However, if we do this thing, what assurance do we have that they're going to be a good neighbor in the sense we're going to pump the water back up?
Okay.
And it's good for them? That's my concern.
We can answer that one, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Kim Kelly, 565 Woodland. I was wondering what percentage of the water that we're going to be buying from the MWD is going to be lost to evaporation? How much of it's going to make it into the ground? How much of it's going to be lost to evaporation, and if there's anything we can do about that?
Okay.
Caroline Brown, Alta Vista Drive. Yes, the question about Arcadia sharing the aquifer with us, the Raymond Basin, the East Raymond Basin, was made most clear to me when Councilwoman Delmar talked about it in the form of a swimming pool, and our straw being in the shallow end, and their straw being in the deep end. And no matter how much water we put in, if it fills up the deep end, and we're still drawing air out of the shallow end, or it has to fill up, so we get to draw some water. That was very clear to me. So most of us probably received and filed, you know, water reports in the past in the trash can, but now we're reading them. I had a friend who spent some time with me, spending quite a bit of money, we looked, she did eventually, for a filtering system for her house, and we had to know what we're going to filter based on what's in our water. And it's changed, because it's not Sierra Madre's groundwater or tunnel water. It's imported water, and that's going to change again. Actually, I think for all of us in Sierra Madre, we're very happy with the idea that we're going to strain the chloramine out of our water by putting it through some soil and then pumping it back up. Okay, great. But in the meanwhile, I got this report, and I had a question, and I think they'll be able to clear it up for me. And I could be way off-base, because it's hard to read this stuff. But it talked about where our drinking water came from. It said during the calendar year, we actually had three sources of, it was under the paragraph "drinking water." So I thought this was just kind of not well-reported, because my understanding is our only drinking water that came through the tap came MWD that we purchased. It did not come from the other two sources which are listed here, groundwater and tunnel water. So as a part of that is probably why we didn't have to test in 2014, because it says we tested in 2013 from chromium hex event, which everybody must have seen, the Erin Brockovich film, because that's what she was talking all about. So we'll get to test for more stuff later on if we start... So we'll get to test for more stuff later on if we start drawing it out of the well, out of the ground. Because what was a semi-so-called contaminants in those days that we had to test for are going to be there still. And we get to mix that with MWD water as we strain it through the soil and bring it back up. It's just too bad we don't each have a well in our own yard. I talked to the mayor about my friends and cousins in Nova Scotia, Canada, and a fishing village. Everybody's got a well in their yard. They know exactly how they're using their well water. So we still aren't as good as we might be because we just need to know better how we use our water at the tap at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else comment on the water quality report? Okay, if we can bring it back to council, I think we can answer those questions. The first one, the Santa Anita diversion project, what's the timeline? I know the EIR was just approved, wasn't it? Okay.
The, yes, you're correct. EIR, wow.
EIR.
EIR was just approved by the County Board of Supervisors earlier this month. And the schedule, the most recent schedule I've gotten from the county was that next spring, the work would start.
Okay. Great. Just right after the El Nino hits, right?
Right after the El Nino hits and washes out the existing...
Okay. Okay. But this time, we're going to fix it right.
They won't have to demolish it, it'll already be gone.
Yeah, okay, save some money. Okay, regarding Arcadia, we've made a lot of progress with them. I mean, can you give just a quick overview of what each city is allowed to pump and...
They have limits and...
Yes, Arcadia does have limits, just like we do. There's, the courts have adjudicated the groundwater basin, and there are specific limits on what we can draw from that aquifer. And Arcadia's not going to exceed that, whether or not we're putting water into, into the ground.
Yeah.
The water that we put into the ground will benefit both entities because it will raise the water level in the aquifer and reduce pumping costs for both. But they don't, just because we're putting water in the ground doesn't mean they get to pump out more. The adjudication is what it is.
Yes. And again, when we put the water in, it's our spreading credits. We get the credit for the water that we put in. It's not, that water is not their water.
That is correct. And to, to go on to the next question about evaporation, there is a consideration of evaporation. The water master, actually Stetson Engineers, does the calculation each year. We do not get gallon per gallon for what we put into the ground. We don't get exactly that amount in credit. There's a factor that they use for evaporation. I don't know what that factor is off the top of my head. I would have to look into that for you.
But the question was, what can we do about it?
What can we do about it?
Put a cover over it.
Not much.
Not much.
Well, we could cover it, but...
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like they apply the factor regardless of what we do.
For example, it was suggested once several years ago that we put solar panels over the spreading basins. It was a great idea. The thought was maybe we could generate enough power to, to run our wells and booster pumps. Problem is with covering those basins is we have to be able to get in there with heavy equipment and turn that soil over every year. So any kind of cover we put on that is going to have to be such that we can drive D9 dozers underneath it in order to, to generate the, the clean soil. So that would be quite an undertaking to put a roof over that whole thing.
Yeah.
But Director Reiman, ballpark figure, is the factor less than 5% evaporation? And, you know, or are we talking like 20%? I mean...
I would guess it's in the lower figures, probably the single digits.
Okay.
It soaks in pretty quick.
Yeah, it does. Our basins do take in water very quickly, as proven by testing that was done back in 2005. There was considerable testing done and the, and the water does go into the ground very quickly here.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So any other questions? Okay, I think this is, thank you, Director Reiman. I think this is a receivin' file, so we don't really need to do anything. Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to, we have a public hearing, and this is consideration of a couple of resolutions for the 186 East Highland. So Director Gonzalez, if we can, I don't know how much we, you know, we've had two recent, two public hearings this month. This is the third public hearing on the month. Is anything that you're going to present different from what has been presented at the last meeting or the Planning Commission meeting?
What will be presented this evening is what was presented to the Planning Commission at their July 16th, or July 16th meeting.
Yeah.
Which is specific to the entitlements for the project. The presentation that the City Council received at their July 14th meeting was specific to the disposition and development agreement.
Okay. I'm just, you know, I hate to suggest it, but we have a long agenda, and I think a lot of the information, I think, we're familiar with. So I don't want to, you know, this is not a thing about hiding anything from the public. I mean, everybody seems to be very enthusiastic about the project, but I just ask you to use some discretion to move quickly through some items if it, you know, if you're in your judgment, you think it's not pertinent to actually approving, so...
So what I will do is I will go through the, my presentation. I will try to keep it as brief as possible. Basically, it's an overview of the entitlement applications that have been submitted for the project.
Okay.
The, again, the project location is at the southeast corner of North Hermosa Avenue and West Highland Avenue, as you can see in the site location map depicted here, as well as the aerial view of the site in its present condition. Some of the major project milestones, as I mentioned today, include not only the 1995 acquisition of the property by the Community Redevelopment Agency and entering into an exclusive negotiation agreement with Heritage Housing Partners, but also the recent approval of the disposition and development agreement and application of approval of fee waivers, development impact fees for the project. And also, I mentioned that the Planning Commission did recommend approval to the City Council for the project entitlements that we're going to go through rather quickly. Some general project information, the project has, or the building has been vacant since 2004. Prior uses included both the First Church of Christ Scientist, as well as the Youth Activity Center. The project is zone multifamily, R3 residential. The existing structure is approximately 3335 square feet. The proposed use is to construct three affordable condominium units. And the new square footage is proposed at 4190 square feet and maxes out the proposed lot coverage at 55%. They are providing seven parking spaces total, two spaces per unit, and one guest space. The project entitlements tonight include the historic resource designation, Mills Act contract, a certificate of appropriateness, tentative parcel map, and two affordable housing incentives. Our general plan and housing element do foster and encourage the production of affordable housing. Some of the goals and policies, both by the housing element and general plan element, include to reduce government constraints, to provide regulatory incentives and concessions to offset the cost of affordable housing, to provide fee waivers, and to reduce parking standards. Our zoning ordinance also encourages affordable housing development and encourages development incentives. The two development incentives that the applicant is requesting this evening is both a setback requirement and a parking requirement. The setback is to reduce the required 25-foot setback that is required along Hermosa Avenue to 17 feet 6 inches. Currently, there is a portion of the building that's going to be demolished. It's not historic, historically relevant to the project. It's a CMU building that was added at a later date, has a setback of 11 feet. The current project is setback at 17 15, 17 feet 6 inches. They're going to retain that setback. The parking reduction is really not the reduction of required number of parking spaces. The request is to provide uncovered parking spaces. The historic designation, staff and the Planning Commission have reviewed this thoroughly, and the report prepared for the historic resources evaluation indicates that criterion A historic is the application that we could associate with local events in person significant to the history of Sierra Madre. So in this case, the project qualifies as a landmark for its association with the Carter family and its association further with the First Church of Christ Scientist. The Mills Act contract, it's an application for a, it's one of the benefits of the historic designation, and it essentially serves to compensate for the cost of rehabilitating, ongoing building maintenance for the project. It's a 10-year revolving contract. The historic property preservation agreement is also part of the contract, and the applicant is required to submit this agreement to the Los Angeles County Tax Assessor's Office. There's also a financial analysis of the Mills Act contract that's included as part of attachment and exhibit in the, in the historic resources evaluation report, which also requires that the applicant provide annual updates to the, the city and staff. If the project is designated as an historic landmark this evening, the applicant is required to get approval for a certificate of appropriateness. The certificate of appropriateness basically is the renovation plan, and it requires that the project be evaluated according to the Secretary of the Interior standards in, in keeping many of the defining character feat, defining historic characteristic features of the building. Also, under review this evening is the parcel map. Again, this is not a land subdivision, this is an air parcel subdivision, including, to include three condominium units within the lot. So the overall recommended actions from the Planning Commission to the City Council was to approve Resolution 1546, which is the historic designation and Mills Act contract, to recommend approval of Resolution 1547, which is the certificate of appropriateness, and Resolution 1548, approving both the tentative parcel map and the two affordable housing incentives. I would like to clarify that on the dais, I did hand out revisions to Resolution 1548. And essentially, I, in section, on page two of page seven of that resolution, I added just before, in the middle of the page, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre does hereby resolve as follows. And also, a statement prior to that, and also on page three of seven, I, section three and four, it stated prior, it was that the Planning Commission recommends that the City Council approve. It should just simply me, read that the City Council approves. The findings and conditions of approval in Exhibit A attached to this resolution, that was for section three, and section four would be the same. The applicant does have a presentation as well. If you desire to hear that application, or that presentation, it will go into more detail of each of the topics that we covered today. Otherwise, I will open it up for questions.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have, just a, it's a basic question, and everything looks, looks good to me. I, I'm just wondering about the mechanics of the, of the property tax benefit. Does, that flows to each individual owner of the condominiums, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So does Heritage Partners, do they have to, I guess, is there anything that they have to do, or is it all the individual owners of the condominiums?
The individual owners will receive the tax benefit. Heritage Housing Partners will actually be managing the, the contract, the Mills Act contract.
Okay. So once you buy the condominium, is there anything that they have to do as individual owners to make sure that they, it's, you know, every 10 years rotating, but is there...
In, in the disposition and development agreement, there is reference to CCNRs and homeowner associations, so there are applicable dues that need to be paid.
Okay.
And to, to ensure that the property is maintained according to our City, City of Sierra Madre standards.
Okay.
I, I believe it was on the last City Council report, but can you give us, again, an idea of what the property tax differences are once it's in Mills Act? It was pretty significant, I, I can't remember.
Roughly a tax savings and the, the applicant could, probably knows a little bit more clearly.
2,000 a year, 1,800 a year.
It was about $1,800 a year in tax savings.
Good.
Which normally would be maybe twice as much?
About $5,400 or so.
Oh, significant. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, is it, everybody...
I just want to mention to the public, the Planning Commission has gone through this and they approved it and...
Rather enthusiastically.
I think so, yes.
Especially comments afterwards, so... So do we want to see the presentation?
I don't do that, but if, you know...
Okay. All right, we're, I know you're really proud of this project, and you'd love to tell us about it again, but...
I'm happy to wave our business.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, okay, well, any, so no other questions? So at this point, it's a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public, and comments that you make will be in the record. So please feel free to come and give us your comments. Okay, seeing no comments, we'll bring it back to council. I think it's a great project. I'm glad we're at this point. Oh, I just have one question. If it's approved tonight, when will the groundbreaking be?
Early next year.
Early next year? Okay, so after January sometime? Okay, we'll have a little ceremony?
Let's do that.
Okay. All right, so with that, we have recommendations in front of us. Does anybody like to make a motion?
I will. I move to approve Resolution 1546, approve Resolution 1547, and 1502, and remove, and approve Resolution 1548, as well as the tentative parcel map 1501.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously. So again, thank you very much. This is a bright day for Sierra Madre, just seeing that this is on its way now. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Other items for discussion? Okay, consideration of appointments to the Planning Commission. Madam City Manager.
Mayor, members of the City Council, as you're aware, there are currently two vacancies on the Planning Commission. This item is on your agenda this evening for the council to consider appointment of, of up to two new commissioners. Five applications were received for the two vacancies. The applicants are Matthew, in alphabetical order, Matthew Blaine, Barry Gold, Leslie Hinton, John Hutt, and John Vandeveldt. Each of the applicants was notified that the council would be considering this item this evening, and they were invited to attend the meeting tonight. According to the council's appointment process, the applications were forwarded to you in advance to give you the opportunity, should you desire, to interview these applicants in advance of the meeting. At tonight's meeting, the council members can submit the names of the applicants proposed to fill each vacancy and, to the mayor, and the appointment requires a majority vote approval of the City Council.
Okay. So with that, I, I will, again, if you guys agree, we'll invite any of the applicants that are here to make a statement on behalf of themselves. After they do that, we'll allow the public to comment, and then I'll be looking forward to your recommendations. Okay, so just, again, just by order listed, Matthew Blaine?
Good evening. I won't take a lot of your time. Thank you for the opportunity to consider my qualifications to help the city and preserve the city for how great it is. I've been working in construction and architecture last 30 years and worked with, presenting to, to commissions on many, many occasions, so I have a lot of understanding of both sides of the fence. And I think that this city has proven to be a wise and have a balanced approach that has prevailed even through many exclamations up and down. We, we tend to get it together, and I thank all you for that. And I'm, regardless of tonight, I'm here to contribute to the city, and I'm not going away. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for Mr., Mr. Blaine?
I don't have any questions. I actually sent the same three questions to all the applicants, and Mr. Blaine, I loved your answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list, Mr. Barry Gold.
Aloha, Mayor, and council members. I do not envy you tonight having to decide who to appoint to the Planning Commission. Sierra Madre is blessed to have so many capable people who want to serve this wonderful town. I am one of many who want to contribute my time and skills to preserving the unique character of our village to the foothills. You have recently adopted the general plan update, setting the goals of our city for the next two decades. Paramount among these goals is promoting development that enhances our uniqueness. No one, one hundred and eight years ago, when our city was started, could have planned for Sierra Madre to look the way it does today, a diverse collection of homes of many styles, ages, and sizes. Somehow, it works. We have a charm that is cherished by our residents and envied by those who come to visit. It is true, we could not have planned this, but we can preserve it. Whoever you appoint to the Planning Commission tonight, please be sure that they embrace the goals of the general plan and truly believe in development that is compatible and complementary to our treasured community. I am committed to this goal. If appointed, I would serve with honor and dedication. I do not think you would be disappointed. Thank you for your time and for your consideration of me as a member of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Okay, Mrs. Leslie Hinton.
Good evening, Leslie Hinton on Acacia. I've been a thirty-three-year resident, thirty-three years and two-week resident of Sierra Madre. I grew up in East Pasadena and attended Willard, Wilson, and PHS. I taught for the Pasadena Unified School District at Franklin, San Rafael, and Allendale, and my two children grew up in Sierra Madre. Ashley is a licensed architect, and Jeff is an investment banker, managing director at Barclays. I've been the project manager where I represented the owners for a large construction renovation, and I learned to work with their contractors and their subs. I currently work on a part-time basis, helping companies obtain multimillion-dollar taxable and tax-exempt bonds for large construction projects. I work closely with the Infrastructure Bank. I read bond documents, negotiate rates and fees, and I've helped obtain financing for Catalina Historical Museum, which is the largest commercial project in Avalon since the casino was built, and it's due to open this fall. I've served on the Community Services Commission for six years, and I was a member of the General Plan Steering Committee for how many years is? When the committee broke into subcommittees, I was on the Edit Committee, and I was on the Economic Development Committee with John Hutt. I also pushed for the FARs in the R2 neighborhood to help preserve and ensure the character of the neighborhood that's maintained. I will make project decisions based on codes and ordinances, which are in effect at the time. I will listen to the community input when ordinances are being proposed or updated. I am neither pro-development nor anti-development. I am for responsible development that enhances our community. I believe in property rights, but with property rights, but with any rights you have, you have responsibilities, responsibilities not only to your neighbors, but to the environment and our natural resources. After serving on the General Plan Steering Committee, I would like to be part of its implementation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. John Hutt.
He's in the spirit.
We just want to commend you on your outstanding appearance tonight, Mr. Hutt.
I took the loudest Hawaiian shirt I had. Mayor and council members, I would be honored to serve on the Planning Commission again to help implement the updated general plan. I won't go into full detail on the stuff I put in my application, but I do have significant education and experience in real estate and planning. I've served on a number of boards and commissions for the city, including the Planning Commission previously, and the General Plan Update Committee. I'm a relatively new resident of only eighteen years, but I do plan to live here for much longer. Both my kids are in school here, and again, I'd just be honored to be on the Planning Commission, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. John Vanderveldt.
Good evening, council members. John Vanderveldt, 205 North Hermosa. I did not prepare anything elaborate to say tonight. I chatted back and forth with Denise via email with some questions, and I don't have too much more to add than what was in my application. I've lived in town since ninety-three. Like John Hutt, I've been on the Planning Commission, and my career as an architect basically keeps me, I keep, I deal with a lot of cities and a lot of codes on an everyday basis, and between my normal job and my previous time on the Planning Commission, there's been a lot of experience built up there. That being said, I feel like the pool you have of the applicants is all outstanding, and you really can't make a bad decision, so good luck.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open it for public comment, if anybody wishes to express any opinion on any of the applicants. Oh, here it comes.
I'm Pat Alcorn, and I just wanted to say that having attended almost all of the General Plan Update Committee meetings, and served with Leslie Hinton on the Community Services Commission, I would highly recommend her. I think she would be a wonderful asset to the city.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else care to comment? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to council, and does anybody want to go first? I mean, we can do this many ways. I mean, if everybody just wants to name their two top priority, or, I think we've done it before, where we've all named three and saw how we can do, or we can just talk about one vacancy. Is there any preference on how you'd like to receive or proceed? Could do that.
He's fine.
Everybody give their top three, okay? Who'd like to go first?
Okay, you're looking at me.
Oh, well, that's, that wasn't intentional.
Okay, so first of all, I thought I was just being oh-so smart, the HR person, and sending out the exact same questions to all of our applicants, and I was not smart, because they came back with really amazing answers, and it made the decision even harder, so what I found in the answers that I, that I received was, we have some really smart people out here with a lot of experience and a passion for Sierra Madre, which really touched my heart to see that. And then, but, so it came down to who I felt would best represent our community, and I have three that I feel are excellent choices, and that would be, of course, John Hutt, and Leslie Hinton, and Matthew Blaine.
Okay. Okay, who'd like to go next? I'll look, I'll look at you, Councilmember Harrison.
Yeah, I can go ahead. You know, this is, I really don't like doing this part of the City Council job, because there's just, for people that actually put their name in to apply for a commission, I mean, and that in itself says so much, because this town, as we all know, is so moved by our volunteers, and it really makes a difference because of the people that are so involved in our town. With that being said, I can say, based on my observations on some of these applicants and their involvement with the city, I really wanted to think about the technical aspect, as well as how they would support the general plan, because that, as we know, is really the document of the people, and we are looking for people to implement the general plan. And because of that, I, again, I, we have great applicants here today, but my top three are John Hutt, Leslie Hinton, and Matthew Blaine.
Okay, Councilmember Harabedian.
Sure, and, you know, I wish we could appoint all five of you. You know, I think that the applications are extremely strong from each of you, your comments tonight, you know, even stronger, and I know some of you on a personal basis, some of you I don't, but I know that, you know, each of you has just so much to offer to this commission, and, and I don't think that there's a right or a wrong decision here. So, my three, in no particular order, are John Hutt, John Vanderveldt, and Leslie Hinton.
Councilmember Goss.
I don't want to waste everybody's time by talking about how great this pool is. It is fantastic. I'd be happy with any of the five. I mean that, I really do. They're very impressive people. It comes down to me, based on what I've observed, particularly in the last year, we're going a year and a half now since I've been on council, in terms of what I've seen and how I've seen people speak and positions they've taken on these types of issues, I also balance that against experience, longevity, and the community, which is very important to me. So, I would rate them Hutt, Hinton, and Blaine. One, two, three.
Okay, so we, we have a consensus on John Hutt. So, why don't I just go ahead and make that recommendation and take a vote on that one, then we'll talk about the other one. It's okay? John Hutt, we have, oh, Leslie was, oh. She does, okay. I'll bring them both, and we'll just, I'll make that recommendation to go with John Hutt and Leslie Hinton. Okay, so let's take a vote. Do we need to approve it formally with a vote? So, that's the proposal. Does everybody agree?
That's fine.
I move to approve John Hutt and Leslie Hinton as the next planning commissioners.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would just like to say that for everybody who we couldn't appoint tonight, please, 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 the next time there's an opening, please put your application back in. Thank you.
Okay, and I do, I forgot to say also, just to reiterate, I thank you for all of you that applied. You're all qualified candidates, and in another time and day, I would have no hesitation in making that same recommendation for all five of you. Thank you. Okay, next one is the Energy, Environmental, and Ener Committee.
Correct. Mayor, members of the City Council, there are currently three vacancies on the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Commission. The, there are five applicants submitted for the three vacancies. The applicants are Renee Casuda, Carolyn Joy Dasher, Christopher England, David Gordon, and David Robinson. Similar to the item just before you, these applicants were invited to attend this evening, and were informed that you would be making this appointment this evening, and I won't say anything, because I just said it in the previous item. At this point, I turn it back over to the council.
Okay, so we'll do the same thing, and ask those that are here to come up and make a statement on your behalf. Okay, well, let me get through this electronic thing here. And candidates, and as they're listed here, Renee Casada, is she here? Yes.
Renee Casuda, I applied to this commission, I believe it was in March, when I saw the notice in the eBlast, and I really don't have a lot to say, but this energy, environment, and natural resources is a subject that I've had a lifelong interest in and passion for, and I also have the energy and the ideas to bring to, to bear on a commission like this, and I would love to be part of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Carolyn Dasher.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carolyn Dasher. Thanks for your consideration. I love Sierra Madre. I would love to see us get back on our well. There's many ways to harvest natural rainwater, and I'd like to help educate our citizens about that. I have here the guidance manual from the City of Tucson on water harvesting, because they did a lot of really great things there for water harvesting. So, if appointed, I will continue to learn, so I can make conscious decisions for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher England? Not here, okay. David Gordon?
Good evening. So, I'm David Gordon, and I moved to America in two thousand and two from England, where we don't have a water problem. And then I went to Milwaukee and lived on the edge of Lake Michigan, no water problem. And then I moved to New York, and what I discovered about New York is, there's a wonderful trail along the Old Croton Aqueduct. This aqueduct was built from eighteen thirty-seven to eighteen forty-two, five years, no bulldozers, no mechanical equipment, forty-one miles from Croton to Forty-Second Street, the site of what is now the New York Public Library. There was a time when America believed in public infrastructure and paid for it, and that time seems to have faded. The issue facing the community here is not a technical one, and I do not have any technical qualifications to do with energy, or with water engineering, or hydraulics, and I have none of that, and I'm a newcomer, so either an advantage or a disadvantage, but I think the issue is not a technical one. It's an issue of communication. One has to persuade this community that you have to replace pipes that had a sixty-year life, and they're now ninety years old, and as a result, the water quality contains lots of, lots of elements that turn it brown. Well, what you have to do is replace the pipes. Nobody wants to replace the pipes, because it costs money. So, what I think I can bring to the committee is a sense of strategic focus, and also communication skills. I was a journalist at the beginning of my career on The Economist, and then I was demoted into management and became the chief executive of The Economist, and then I spent a time in television, running a television news station, and then I changed my career entirely and became a museum director, which is what brought me to, to America as the director of the Milwaukee Art Museum. So, I think what I can bring to the committee is a sense of, of strategy, of focus, of communication, of persuasion. So, that's my pitch, and if you don't appoint me, I'm sure there are better qualified people, and no hard feelings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, David Robinson.
Well, I certainly stepped in it when I first came here, to, thought I was supposed to make a comment at this particular period of time. Well, anyway, I was interested in energy. I've always been interested in energy. I have a long-time career. I worked for Glendale Water and Power for twenty-eight years. I understand the electrical business from the ground up, but I also am a big believer in climate change, that I think that individuals need to make changes in their lifestyles to address this threat that faces us all, as the thunderstorms are coming anytime now. But I've done that in my own home. I've been in Sierra Madre since seventh grade. I went to Wilson Junior High, Pasadena High School, PCC. My wife and I lived, homeowners here for over thirty years, but we've made changes at our house. We took out our front lawn, and before there were rebates, because we see the, the water issue is a very serious thing. We also put in solar electric at our house, and right now, I don't have much of a solar, electric bill from Southern California Edison, because we live within our energy budget, and it's something that I'm very passionate about, and I think that I would be a good asset to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, any public comments on the candidates?
Kim Kelly, as a member of the Ener Commission, I would really, really enjoy working with both Carolyn and Renee. I've worked with them on energy, well, on environmental-related topics before. I've seen what Carolyn can do as far as outreach. It's amazing. Renee, her knowledge is incredible. The other candidates sound really awesome also, and I'll leave those up to you, but I would really enjoy working with them and consider it an honor to be working with them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council, so let's go in reverse order this time. Mayor Pro Tem Goss, you can go first.
Are we doing how many?
Well, there's...
We did...
There's five candidates and there's three positions.
Four.
Why don't we just do our three?
Okay.
Just because it's going to be kind of...
Oh, shoot. Okay. This is tough, folks. It looks easy, but it's tough.
Now, you guys can also do what I did once to the mayor. I declined to recommend because I felt that the two were equal, and I let the mayor make the decision, you know? You can do that, too.
Why didn't I think of that?
No, I just thought, brought that, not that I want that, you know? Like, on the last one, I didn't have to say anything. You guys had already decided, and I just went along with it, so...
Okay, well, to me, it's Carolyn Dasher is flat-out my top candidate. That's a no-brainer. I like Renee Casuda, I think she'd be fantastic. My number three is, this is just, I came in here flipping a coin, and the presentations did not help me at all because I'm torn between Mr. Robinson and Mr. Gordon. It's like apples and oranges. Mr. Robinson has this tremendous experience in electricity, solar power, but Mr. Gordon, the kind of strategic thinking you're talking about would be exceptionally valuable to us. I hate giving either one of you up, and if I have to toss a coin on you, I'd go with Mr. Robinson by just that much, by that much.
Okay, so, Mr. Robinson, okay. Councilmember Harabedian.
Yeah, no, this is tough. The candidates that I'm voting for, for this commission are Mr. Robinson, Ms. Casuda, and Ms. Dasher, but I do want Mr. Gordon to serve in some capacity for the city. I mean, I don't know if the Ener Commission is the best spot for him. I think he could probably run for council, so... But I think, I think we could really use you, and, you know, I don't know how, I don't know what other commissions are coming up, but would really love to see you on one, so...
Okay. Councilmember, who's next?
And out of curiosity, are there any other vacancies in the other commissions?
Yeah, we have...
Yes, almost all of our other commissions have vacancies.
Well, there you go. So, everyone else that put their application in, I'll make this quick and easy. Carolyn Dasher, I mean, you've obviously shown tremendous leadership in this area, and I think that you'd be of value on the commission also, as well as Ms. Casuda. I know you've, on numerous occasions, have come in to speak on behalf of environmental issues, so those are my top two. And I, again, this is very tough. So, Mr. Gordon, I'm going to encourage you to, I heard there are other vacancies, so I'm hoping you're going to apply because, again, I think I, I do want to echo what Councilmember Harabedian said. I know you bring value somewhere, whether it's the Ener Commission, I think would be good, but I think, Mr. Robinson, your experience in water and your professional experience, I think, will also bring value to this commission.
Okay, Councilmember Delmar.
First of all, I apologize to Mr. Robinson. I never got back to him. He did want me to call him, so I apologize. I just get to talk to a few of our applicants, and I, one of the ones I talked to was Mr. Gordon, and I enjoyed our conversation very much, and so, for my three, it would be Carolyn, Renee, and David Gordon.
Okay, so, Carolyn and Renee are on all the ballots. Okay, so, then, let's see. If I do mine, let me just see, because here, I'm an oddball. I was really impressed with Christopher England's qualifications, but nobody is mentioning him. So, I'll just say what my top three were. I was going to go with Christopher England, Carolyn Dasher, and David Robinson. So, that would be Carolyn. So, Carolyn is unanimous across, and we have four for David Robinson and four for Renee. So, what I'm going to do is defer to my peers and go with Renee as the...
Well, we get, there's three of them, right?
Oh, so it's a...
So, it's Carolyn, Renee, and David.
Okay, so it's Renee and David Robinson, I guess, is the general consensus here. Okay, so, I'll put forth as for a vote Renee, Carolyn, and David Robinson. So, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, congratulations to our new Ener Commissioners. Okay. And once again, all of them, I thought, were outstanding, and...
Mr. Gordon, go for the community services, you'd be perfect.
We need to take the vote. We need to take the vote.
We did.
No, we did, it's the first and second, we didn't vote.
Oh, I did.
We didn't vote, though.
It was a little more informal, I just asked if everybody was in agreement.
Sorry.
So...
We're good.
That's okay, it is unanimous.
It is.
Yes, uh-huh. Okay. Yes, let's take a quick break.
A break.
Okay, shall we resume? Okay, item number five, consideration of appointment to the city council's library services proposal review committee.
Mayor, members of the city council, I can make this very brief. At a previous meeting, you appointed seven members to serve on the library services proposal review committee. Since that time that the council made the appointment, the council was contacted by the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society, who indicated an interest on having one of their members serve on this committee. So, because it was formally, the members were formally appointed by the council, it was necessary to put this back on your agenda if you wanted to add another member or modify membership somehow. And that's it.
Okay, conversation we had, I think, council member Ayers Mendy, you were willing to vacate your seat for this to keep an odd number of people?
Yes, and then that's why I asked for this to put on the agenda, because I wanted to make sure that I can put my name forward to say that I can step down. I want to make sure it stays odd number, and I think it makes sense to have the Historic Preservation Society represent on this committee.
Yeah.
Is there another committee that for council member Ayers Mendy, so she's at least on one of them?
There are three committees right now, and I think its public safety is Pro Tem Gos, revenue is Harabedian, and now library would be Delmar.
And where is the mayor?
It's not on any.
I will be the first one to volunteer under the next committee.
You can be a rover and just sit in, you know.
That would be good. I think she should go to all of them.
Okay, so, let's see, before we can open it for public comment, and we can bring it back and decide how we're going to do this. So, I'll open it for public comment.
Don't use the word rover again.
Why is that?
Wow, I didn't even think about it in a negative manner. Now I'm trying to think what he meant by that.
I don't know what that means. This has gone over my head, so, okay.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Ziff, and I'm the president of the Historical Society here in Sierra Madre. And I would greatly appreciate the advantage of having someone from the Historical Society, and it would actually be the person that is the archivist on our board that would take that position, so that they would, she would be knowledgeable of what needs to be done and what needs to be protected.
Who would that be? So, I would have the name?
Joan Spears.
As Mrs. Spears, does she know, does she know that we've, that you're making that recommendation?
I have talked to her, so, Joan, yes.
So, we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't be...
It's not a surprise, no.
All right. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else like to comment? Okay, bringing it back, I mean, that works for me. How about everybody else?
I would just like to say, we had a lively discussion about this at the first library contract proposal meeting, and everybody was agreed that we need to have someone from the Historical Society, because it plays such an important role with our library.
Yeah.
And I think Joan Spears would be wonderful.
Yeah, I agree, and, you know, I am not as, I guess, worried about having an even number, so if council member Ayers Mendy wanted to stay on, I...
I'm not either.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you'd be a great, you know, addition, and I think you'd be valuable to it as well, so, you know, I'm not as religious about it, I guess.
Yeah, good point, yeah. Neither am I, come to think of it. I hadn't thought about it, so, but Mr. Harabedian's right.
I am definitely not trying to step off of the committee.
It kind of sounds like that.
There really is value, though, I think, to having an odd number.
Well, no, because you...
I think you should continue with that.
Well, you just don't have the chair vote until a tie, so, that's what I think.
If the council feels very strongly about having me on it, I could do that, but I, I think it makes sense to have seven, to keep it odd. And that is actually one reason we looked at the public safety, too, because I, at one point, I thought I was sitting on that committee, but we wanted to keep that odd also, so I think to keep the consistency, we should say that.
I'm fine with that.
Odd number?
Yeah, if that's your preference.
All right, I'm good either way, so, if you want us...
So, I moved to have council member Ayers Mendy removed from the committee and add in Joan Spears as the representative from Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society, the library contract committee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, carries unanimously. Okay, you're right, that was quick.
Thanks for waiting, Leslie.
Okay, now, award of professional services contract to SRI Raftellis for preparation of citywide customer water budgets.
We have Director Inman here.
Okay, as you'll recall, this is an item that was first discussed at your July fourteenth meeting. At that point, council asked that staff provide additional information and bring the matter back tonight. You specifically asked for information regarding simplifying of water budgets calculation, information regarding plant factors, information regarding other options for encouraging water conservation, and you also requested information regarding the water budget model that's used by Irvine Ranch Water District. So, just by way of introduction and reminder, Sierra Madre did not meet its state mandated thirty-two percent water use reduction in June, missing the mark by over three million gallons, and for the month of July and June, as this is measured cumulatively, we are, as of yesterday's numbers, at twenty-eight percent, so we're still somewhat below the mark. We still have four percent to make up. So, with that, I'll go through some of this and try and hit the high points for you. First of all, looking at methods of allocating water, one of the first things that staff looked at was just using the state methodology. One of the things the council asked to do was to look at just looking specifically at the high water users, and that's essentially what the state has done, as you know. And to that end, to try and do what the state did, I contacted the State Water Resources Control Board and communicated with several of their staff members, and at the end of those discussions, came away with no idea how the state came up with their allocations. They couldn't tell me. They couldn't tell me how they arrived at their breakpoints or their thresholds between tiers. They couldn't give me any of their rationale. The best they could come up with was, well, it was a trial and error method. So, that didn't help us out any, it really didn't give us any basis on which to develop a program similar to what the state has done. And one of the reasons, as you know, that we're looking at this whole thing is because we've had concerns from a number of people in the community that the, the way we're currently setting water budgets, or, excuse me, water allocations is unfair to those folks that have been conserving water since before this process started. So, there's that way of setting the allocations. The other way that we've come up with is water budgets, and that's really the crux of what we're talking about this evening. And a simple indoor/outdoor water budget is something that we could arrive at by simply determining how many residents are in each house or at each property, or actually even the number of total residents in Sierra Madre. And with that number, eleven thousand ninety-four residents is what the state uses as our set population, with that number and the sixty-five gallons per capita daily that the council has established as indoor use, we could calculate the indoor use for the whole city. Then we could back into, we know what the state's goal is, that they've set. That really should be considered a hard number. That's what we're supposed to meet. That is essentially Sierra Madre's water budget. So, given that water budget and what we need for indoor use, the remainder is what we could use and budget for outdoor use. And the council could do that in any way you choose, so there would be an indoor factor and an outdoor factor. What the city of Irvine, excuse me, the Irvine Ranch Water District, which does encompass part of the city of Irvine, is they have set a very basic water budget, and what they've done is established some defaults. According to their program, single-family residential, each house has four residents in it, thirteen hundred square feet of landscape, and that's it. They have one plant factor that they apply for all landscape. That's residential, single-family. For residential multifamily, whether it's condos, duplexes, whatever, they assume three persons per resident, per residence, four hundred and thirty-five square feet of landscaping, and again, the same plant factor that is used citywide. And then for apartments, they assume there is no landscaping, and the apartment has two dwellers in each dwelling unit. One of the differences, though, with the Irvine Ranch model is they have some very sophisticated weather monitoring equipment within their control, within their jurisdiction, and what they're able to do is determine a weather factor, an enviro, or evapotranspiration figure for each month, actually for each day, and they can vary that ET number according to the weather. So, imagine being the water customer and having to try and figure out for the day what your water ET figure is, and looking at their historical figures that, that they showed on their website, there can be a tremendous variance between one form of weather and, and the other, from windy weather, hot weather, to cold, foggy, and rainy weather. That can change considerably. That model with those kind of variables, or that kind of variable, is not something that our billing system can handle, so it's not something that staff would, would recommend. And note also, by the way, the Irvine Ranch indoor water use is fifty gallons per capita daily versus our sixty-five. If an Irvine Ranch customer doesn't feel that that allocation is appropriate, they're welcome to, to apply for a variance, and they, they do that through a similar manner than, than what we use, but they have to make their case for why they need more. Otherwise, they get the base allocation. That is, that is the Irvine Ranch model. What staff proposed back on the fourteenth was a model that would simply have an indoor amount, and then we would use aerial photography and, and other methods to determine what the outdoor forms of landscaping were and provide a plant factor times a square footage of each one of those types of landscaping to develop a water budget for each individual property. That, too, again, we're going back to the fairness issue, that, too, could be considered by any water customer as, as unfair. That could lead to appeals by the customer saying, no, I have more square footage of flowers than what you're saying. I have more square footage of turf than what you're saying, and I should get more water. And one of the things that the, that type of model would, would possibly result in is exceeding our state mandated water budget, because if we use the standard plant factors that are shown in the staff report, times a square footage of turf, we could very well end up budgeting more water than we actually have for our customers. So, as you can see, there are a lot of moving parts of all of these proposals. We still believe that an indoor and outdoor water budget is, is the way to go, and what staff is proposing is something similar to the Irvine Ranch model, where we would have a single plant factor applied to all landscaping, and then residential indoor use based on the number of residents and outdoor use based on the amount of irrigated area. And that is what our consultants would be measuring using aerial photography and infrared data to determine what that outdoor irrigated area would be. Those would be the two factors that would be combined to provide a water budget for each individual property. What may be a challenge for the council, for the community, is determining what that plant factor is going to be. As you can see on page fourteen, the plant factors that we were, have been using in establishing water budgets vary somewhat, and in fact, those plant factors vary from what Irvine Ranch uses. What that district has used is a plant factor that's somewhere in between what you would use for turf and what you would use for drought tolerance. What that allows for is, gives people that have a drought tolerant landscape a little bit more water than they need. It gives those with a lot of turf a little bit less water than they would need, but it's a compromise between the two. That's how Irvine Ranch has tried to address a fairness issue with their particular program. What we would need to do in Sierra Madre, if we're going to use a model similar to Irvine Ranch, where we have a simple indoor use factor and outdoor use factor, is to determine what that plant factor is going to be if we're going to assume a single plant factor for all landscape. Again, what you could also do as an option would be to go back to what we were proposing initially, where we have different plant factors assigned to what can be determined by reviewing the aerial photography and infrared. Again, though, you're opening yourself up to more appeals with the customer saying, well, no, I've got more turf than what you're saying, and so on, because once you get into tree cover, it's difficult for the people that are, that are doing the analysis to determine what's actually under those trees. So, with that, that's kind of a high-level overview of, of the water budget that staff is proposing. There were some additional items that, that we added towards the end of the, the report. Council asked for some additional recommendations on water conservation measures. Those are found beginning on page thirteen. We've listed eight items, including the increasing the penalty amount for exceeding the water conservation targets. We have included a proposal to allow staff to reduce allocations during the appeal process. What's happening now is people are filing appeals. If we find that their appeal is warranted, we do grant the additional water allowance, but what we're doing through that process is we're increasing our water use. There's no provision for decreasing the water use if we find that people are getting more water than they need. One of the other things we're proposing is that the council consider, again, the installation of flow restrictors for certain violations of the code, and we're also proposing that the, the city adopt the state's prohibition on watering within forty-eight hours after measurable rain. So, with that, with those items and the recommendations in the staff report, staff is asking council to award a professional services contract to SRI Raftellis in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-one for preparation of citywide water budgets, and to provide an additional appropriation of forty-four thousand to cover these unbudgeted expenses, to include also fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for hiring temporary staff to cover telephones and walk-in visits from customers inquiring about how this program is going to work. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, I'd like to go first.
One, one question, just for the public's benefit. Fines coming from the state for us making, not making the thirty-two percent nut, what do we know about those fines? When would they hit? Can we give us a time, and what is the probability we'll ever see such fines?
I can't give you a probability of the time, and that is one of the questions that I did ask the staff at the State Water Board when I talked to them. They couldn't tell me. I don't know whether it's because they didn't know or whether they didn't want to say. That I don't know, but they couldn't tell me when those penalties would be assessed. They are tracking our water use. We are submitting that to them every month. That's part of what Director Jose Reynoso does every month on our behalf. Reading through the regulations, the first thing the state is going to do before they start assessing penalties is they're going to get in touch with us and tell us what we have to do. So, if we don't do something ourselves to get this under control and meet that goal, then the state is going to just tell us what they want us to do, and it's after that step that they'll start assessing penalties. So, we might want to consider doing it ourselves rather than having the state board tell us what they think we should do.
Yeah, exactly.
And in my discussion with one of the staff members that actually put this program together, this, this conservation program together with the state, he had all kinds of strange ideas that didn't seem like they were going to work in Sierra Madre or even in real life. For example, he said that all it was needed was education. No penalties were needed. And I don't know how that's going to, to work based on our, our experience, but, so I don't know whether, whether the practical experience is really there at the state board to have them telling us how we should, we should get compliance. So, again, to answer the question, I don't know when they're going to come up with the fines. I can't say for sure, and the state staff couldn't tell me either, but we do know they're going to come after us first to tell us what to do.
Relative to other cities that they're monitoring, how are we doing?
I actually haven't done that, that level of analysis.
I'm just wondering if they'd be more focused on larger cities where the, where there's really large amounts of water being used.
That, again, that's a great question. It's not one that I have, have actually asked or researched. I know that the state board is typically understaffed, but it is surprising how quickly they have responded to the governor's direction to implement these programs, so they may be getting some pressure to act quickly.
Okay, other questions?
Director Inman, the, you know, I continue to think that water budgets are, are the future, and it's only a matter of time probably until Sierra Madre gets there. My only concern really is that, you know, we're, we're kind of utilizing water budgets for a different purpose than they're historically used for, right? Water budgets are usually, and we talked about this last time, utilized for water rate studies. Do we know of any other cities that have done what we're, you know, contemplating now, which is using the water budgets to, to affect, you know, rationing or conservation?
I don't know of any other cities that have done that, no.
Okay. My other, my other point is on the flow restrictors. I think that the previous council, you know, we were pretty allergic to that idea, and I'm coming around to it a little bit more than I was before, but I still find it to be kind of like an anti-American thing. I don't know how to explain it, you know, I just don't like the fact that any city council or any city would be able to come in and put a flow restrictor on anyone, but that being said, do we have, if we were to go with the flow restrictor idea? I know that we have, from that chart, we have a few pretty bad abusers, right? Is there any way to, some of, some of the criteria that we have here, the way to apply flow restrictors could work, but I really see flow restrictors as being something that we could do for the egregious over-water users, and, you know, is it possible just to do that, right? Say, you know, we know that there's sixty homes out there that are just, just again egregious. It's not even close. It's not like they're just missing by a couple of units. It's, they don't care what their water allocation is. They're just going to continue doing what they're going to do. So, is there any way to do that, pinpoint actual users with flow restrictors, or do we, it's a question probably for the city attorney as well, or do we get into problems of, you know, kind of equal protection, or, or kind of, you know, we're, we're pinpointing you based on your use rather than saying, okay, you know, there's some sort of formula here?
I think you're going to need to have some sort of a specific criteria for establishing when you're going to use those rather than singling out an individual. So, perhaps some of the, the things that we have pointed out in the staff report might be some of the criteria that you might use, but there could be other criteria that the, the council suggests, but it would, I believe it would need to be something, and I'll of course defer to city attorney, but it'd need to be something that we actually spell out in our code.
Yeah, I guess my concern, and I'll let the city attorney, I think that's the right answer. I can't imagine us being able to do it any other way, but...
No, yeah, that's, that's correct. I mean, you have the, the authority to use a flow restrictor, but the question is, at what point in time would you choose to have that be a remedy? And what, and you should establish a standard that you can apply across the board.
Yeah, and I guess my concern to my colleagues is, you know, a couple of the ways that...
for establishing when you're going to use those rather than singling out an individual. So perhaps some of the things that we have pointed out in the staff report might be some of the criteria that you might use, but they could be other criteria that the council suggests. But it would, I believe it would need to be something, and I'll of course defer to city attorney, but it'd need to be something that we actually spell out in our code.
Yeah. I guess my concern, and I'll let the city attorney, I think that's the right answer. I can't imagine us being able to do it any other way, but.
No, yeah, that's, that's correct. I mean, you have the authority to use a flow restrictor, but the question is, at what point in time would you choose to have that be a remedy? And you should establish a standard that you can apply across the board.
Yeah, and I guess my concern to my colleagues is, you know, a couple of the ways that staff is recommended here, you know, three or four times missing, missing the budget or, you know, that could be a really dangerous way of looking at it, because what if you miss it by two or three units every time, right? That, to me, doesn't deserve a flow restrictor. It's someone that, again, is over by an extreme amount. And it's a little bit harder to say that, because then do you do it by, do you do it by absolute numbers? You know, if it's twenty units over, or do you do it by a percentage? If you do it by a percentage, then you're, again, you're, I think, prejudicing low-water users even more, right? Because if they have a twelve percent allocation and you say if you go over by fifty percent, well, that's not that much water. So this might be a moot point, because I'm not sure we're going to go flow restrictors. But I just think that it's an interesting, it's an interesting tool that we could use that I think a year ago I was not even contemplating. But I think if it becomes a situation where we just see that small percentage of users continuing to kind of abuse the, you know, their water, I think it's something that I would consider. But thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, questions? I have one. When we do the, first of all, so far, how many appeals have we had to where they went to the second phase and you are actually calculating a budget for the customer?
I'm sorry, I think you asked that question earlier, and I didn't get, I hadn't gotten you the answer on that yet. But I would say that we're, for this go-around for appeals, we're probably over about thirty.
Okay, it's not really that many then.
And how many appeals have we not gone, have we gone through all the appeals? Are we still trying to get through some?
I don't think we have any that are pending right now. I believe we have all of them at some point in the process. Because what's happening is with the three steps that the council has established, you know, we get that first appeal, we do the calculation to make sure their initial calculation is correct, then we send a letter back to them explaining what the next steps are. So some of these appeals are within those, that three-step process.
Okay, and how many appeals have we gotten overall? I thought I heard a number like forty-one or something.
I think it's more than that at this point.
Like how many?
Again, I apologize, I don't have that.
Since we, since we did the second part, the second round.
Second round?
Oh, I, I apologize, I don't, I don't have a number on that.
Could you get that number to us? Yeah, that would be interesting to see how many people actually have appealed.
Okay, then, when we, when we do the appeal, your spreadsheet is based on, just refresh my memory on this. I mean, we have an allocation of sixty-five gallons per day per person. Then we back that down to the conservation target, which is thirty percent of that, right?
That's correct.
Or, no, seventy percent of that, yeah.
It's, yeah.
Thirty percent reduction, yeah.
But we also include the outside factors, too.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that. I just was wanted to focus on the indoor part, because I, you know, again, just things I've been reading, I think the sixty-five is kind of high, actually, just from what I'm reading. And that article that I had forwarded to all of you, I think Marin at town got down to forty-seven, you know? So anyway, you know, I know my own situation. We're so far below that that it's just ridiculous. So I know it can be done without, you know, tremendous sacrifice. I mean, we're still taking showers, you know? You would know that if we weren't, by the way, yeah. But the reason I'm asking is I'm just trying to think ahead a little bit. But what, and the same thing with the plant factors for outdoors. You took, the plant factors that you have in the calculation came from where? Where did you?
Those actually came from class material that one of our certified conservation experts provided for us. It was part of his training.
Yeah, okay.
Got it from Jose, and I got it from our other certified water conservation experts.
And you apply a smoothed evapotranspiration factor over, based on historical?
We have, our evapotranspiration numbers are actually spelled out in the code on a twelve-month cycle. Because our system doesn't, our billing system can't accommodate a different budget for each month.
Yeah, right.
We basically just average those six-month periods of those ET numbers that are spelled out in our water-efficient landscape ordinance.
So the same thing, though, for the outside use? We then ratchet it down thirty percent to get you to a conservation number? Okay, yeah, okay, so that's good. All right. Okay, well, that's my only question. Oh, just the other question. You went back to the consultants to see if it was going to be cheaper if we applied just a single? And they came back and said no?
They actually came back and said no.
Yeah.
The way the RFP went to them, they were to break it down into the, basically the types of areas that are shown here with the numbers. And they all agreed to that when they sent me in their proposals. Then when I got back to them, they said, oh, no, we weren't going to break it down to that level.
Oh, really?
Really.
Okay.
So there's a potential that if we decided to go with the more detailed evaluation, it could cost.
They could push back, yeah, okay. All right, we'd have to look at the contract and fight over that, okay. All right. That's all the questions I have for right now. Okay, so any other questions? We'll open it for public comment. Anybody care to comment?
Charlie Kissinger, six seventy-seven Brookside. I've always been very miserly with a lot of stuff, and it seems pretty hard to cut back on some of these things. My, I have three properties. There are fourteen and fifteen on the water usage. We don't water anything. I've taken out washers on my rental properties. There isn't much left. I was under one and over one on the other two. This part goes back to, last week I couldn't stay. And when Mr. Capoche was talking about giving people extra points of water usage for lawns, I about hit the ceiling. I said, wait a minute, I took all mine out twenty years ago. I put in cactus, and you're going to give somebody extra who has a lawn? That didn't sit well with me. Okay, that's all I want to say with that. And that's not really criticism, that's just a statement of how I feel.
Absolutely.
The second thing was, nobody on Brookside Lane wants to come down here, so that's why I come down here. All of us on Middle Brookside, on the west side, all back up to two large properties owned by Bob Georgie. One of them had the old house that was torn down behind mine twenty years ago, and one of them is further down. It's about a five hundred square foot, excuse me, about a five hundred long piece of property feet. And it's straight up and down. And there's nobody up there watering anything. I applied for a variance, and Bruce sent back a nice thing saying, it's not you that want to water your neighbor's property, but we can't do that. Well, it might be my neighbor's property, but there is no neighbor. It's just a vacant hillside. He lives in Colorado, he doesn't care about anything. And it goes all the way down Middle Brookside. And if you look down from Canyon Crest onto the houses at Brookside, you'll see how steep it is. If you want to look at this, here's kind of the picture. It's not a real good one. That fence on there is not really the property line. That fence is to stop debris from falling in my backyard. It's in the middle of the property. So it's very steep. And this year, for the first time, I have watered, I started watering when my, by summer quota went up a point. So I started watering the hillside, but for the first time since I've owned that property thirty years, that hillside is coming down. It's not going to crash down, but we haven't had rain yet. So I've, at this point, I'm saying, I'm watering whatever it's going to be. If it's going to be an extra unit, it's going to be an extra unit. And we're all starting to water the hillside. I wish there was some way that that allotment that Mr. Georgie should be using on his hillside could get spread to the houses along the bottom. I don't know how that would work, because we all, we all do water that hillside. And again, none of it's our property. Thank you.
That's an interesting dilemma.
Caroline Brown, Alta Vista Drive. I also found that Laguna Beach County Water District, it's not a county, but they call it a county water district, in two thousand and eleven was helping their people with the idea of a water budget. And I think as much what you said, it was the idea when they were first starting off their tiered pricing system. But once a person got a water budget, whatever it was, whatever it was, and they stayed within their water budget, all they paid was in tier one. Whereas here, we end up paying in tier two and three, even though we, tier two for the most part, very seldom in tier three, even though we're within our allotment, is the way we set up our tiers here. I thought it was interesting. I learned that it was the American Water Works Association that established way back in nineteen, late nineteen nineties, the amount of water that a person should consider healthful for a day indoors use. But that date in and of itself tells you it's way back before all the efficiency washing machines and so on and so forth came into effect, and the dishwashers, for that matter, came into effect. I know that some places, they just use the county assessor's parcel information to determine what your square footage is. And if you use Google Earth to find my property, I'm not sure if you could tell the difference between oak trees and grass. The only reason why I say that is because one time a man wanted to do an evaluation for me for a solar, and he said, are those, is that trees or grass? You know, where would I put the solar so that the sun would hit it, you know? And I said, they're trees, so we didn't go further with a solar project. So the water budget for Laguna Beach anyhow initially thought that they would provide people with a good amount of water so they wouldn't have to go to penalties. And I guess we got into the whole penalty process when we were really trying to preserve our wells and were really very, trying to be pretty serious about it all. I remember when we were doing this, I had an acquaintance that said, well, I'm just going to use a whole lot of water, because then I'll get a higher. But then it was pointed out to me, which I pointed out to her, that really won't work, because it's budgeted on what you did a year ago, and you probably weren't thinking like this a year ago. Well, actually, she probably was thinking like this a year ago, because if she's going to use a lot of water now, she was using a lot of water then. I would hope, and actually, it could very well be the case, that some of us that have been really low would have a fair water budget that would be higher and that we could actually maybe preserve some things on our property. I am losing oak trees because of drought, but I've been harvesting rainwater. I harvest bathroom water. I mean, there are a whole lot of people in the foothills that are doing some interesting things. And those of us that are doing really well is because we do a lot of camping, you know, dry camping. So I'm actually kind of tired of dry camping in my own Sierra Madre kitchen, but I can, I can do it longer if I have to. All right, thank you.
That's Sierra Meadow, mayor and council members. I definitely recommend moving towards a water budget that's based on a formula rather than past use. I think the whole concept of past use is punishing to people who have conserved water before. And when we go towards the formula and you try to figure out how it should be, I think we should try to balance simplicity with equity. Finding the most equitable thing might be very, very complicated. And there has to be something where, I think, you know, radio, what was it? Infrared town drone, I don't know. It just seems overkill. And just saying a simple thing, you know, your lot is so big, you know, easy math, that's how much you should get. I think that as much as it pains me to say that probably modeling ourselves after Irvine in this case makes a lot of sense. Also, I think there's a certain, there's a certain more equitability in it. If somebody has a big lawn, why does that give them an entitlement to more water? We're going to have plant factors, but we're not having people factors. I can tell you my two little kids go through dishes and clothes like you've never seen, and the dishwasher and the washing machine go way more than they used to before I had kids. So I got to make that water up somewhere else. I've taken out my lawn. That's part of the trade-off that we make as a household. And I think if somebody wants to have a swimming pool or a big lawn, they need to figure out how to make that up somewhere else, whether it's capturing rainwater or installing, you know, sprinkler sensors that can tell when there's rain so they don't water the sprinklers when the rain comes. I think that's more equitable and a simpler process. Thanks.
I'm David Robinson, four thirty-one Santa Anita Court. I like the idea of the water budget. I think that it's more fair and equitable for everybody concerned that you can't buy your way out of this, that just because you made, you know, choices of a huge marathon lawn or whatever. Like at my property, in my backyard, I put in a big patio. It took up about a third of the backyard space. So I don't have to water that area, because I put in hardscape. So I think that, I think the simplest thing would be, and most straightforward, would be just to assess size of the lot, size of the house, how many people live there, and come up with a formula. And if you want lawn, great. I mean, I have grass in my backyard, I don't have any grass in my front yard. It's just down to people making choices. And I think that we are concerned about the appearance of our houses. A lawn looks great, I love a lawn, but I think also that drought tolerant can be done in such a way that's attractive and will add a lot of variety to the city. And I think that, I think the water budget is really the way to go. And I don't think you should get in the weeds, so to speak, of deciding, well, oh, this is marathon, or this is drought tolerant, or this is hardscape. It's just, this is size your lot, this is how much water you're going to get, and see if you can live within that budget.
Thank you. Hey, any other comments? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll bring it back for a discussion. I'm going to, do you guys mind if I go first on this one? Because I've had kind of a little bit of a change of heart after analyzing all this. So I just wanted to let you guys know where I'm seeing it these days. Because I am just very frustrated that everything we try to do to address fairness, it just, something else comes up that, you know, if it's not more money, it's just more wrinkles in it, that's, or difficulties in implementing, and always that law of unintended consequences. And it kind of scares me, reading it now, to think that we could design a new plan here and, you know, come up with household use and plant factors and, you know, notify everybody and change it and deal with all the questions that are going to come up, because it's a brand-new process again, and then actually could possibly go backwards with it. I mean, there's a couple of, three scenarios here. We could do all the calculations and nail it, get it just right. Or we can be too severe and restrict water, you know, ration water more than it really needs to be to meet the state requirements. Or we can not ration it enough and then actually, like, we're at twenty-eight percent now, and we could go backwards with it. So that's kind of the fear I have with it also. When I, when I think about it more in dealing with the unfairness issue, and have you guys read that little thing I had sent you that I stumbled into? I mean, there's different components to enforcing, or not enforcing, but to making conservation work. One of them was, you know, this fellow had a recommendation and said the same thing that a lot of people do. When you do it based on past usage, it's unfair. But also, what kind of opened my eyes with that, he just emphasized how you have to enforce. And we've had this light touch that we didn't want to, you know, I mean, the Ener Committee made recommendations to have pretty radical penalties, and we decided, again, just to go with a light touch. And maybe if we were a little bit more forceful in demanding that people meet their conservation targets, we might be at thirty-two by now, but we don't know, because we just started doing it anyway. So I keep thinking about the fairness issue and all the good people that have tried to conserve water in the past. But then I started thinking, well, we have this appeal process that gives them a safety shield with that. So if you go through the appeal process, we can ensure that you will have enough water that if you're diligent in watching your household use and cutting back outside, that you will have a fair amount, that you won't be penalized. Now, the problem is, of course, you have a neighbor. But you weren't looking at your neighbor when you decided to conserve years ago. You know, you did the right thing, and I'm expecting that people will continue to do the right thing if we just focus on your own issue. the right thing, if we just focus on your own issue and doing the right thing for yourself, we can ensure that you're not going to be penalized greatly with that. The problem is, is we keep giving dispensation to, as people appeal, then we could be inching away from our conservation goal there, so we might get to a point where we have to enact a more severe thirty-five percent. Or we can wait and see a little bit, and see how the penalties unfold. We haven't done the west side of town yet. They're going to be getting their bills anytime now, and when they get that shock of the rate increase combined with the penalties, maybe they will be driven to conserve more, you know? So where I'm coming out on this is after thinking about it deeply and spending a lot of time, I'm really afraid of moving in the direction of doing the allocations. And for another reason, and maybe the city attorney can comment on that, when I look at Irvine and how they're doing it with these daily evapotranspiration factors, and actually changing what people are paying depending on that factor and the weather, is that going to withstand the scrutiny of the court case that was just settled, that the Supreme Court declined to de-publish also, I understand? So...
It did decline to depublish the case.
Yeah.
Well, you're, the city of Sierra Madre has a good fee study, it's on solid footing, and the water rates depend on that fee study, so...
I was really alluding to...
Penalties are a different thing.
Oh, sure, but what I was thinking, I didn't make myself clear. I was thinking the advantage of spending this money and doing the groundwork to determine how much of a person's landscaping is, you know, I thought we could use that in the future to go to a rate system. And now, I'm very cautious, because I'm uncertain whether that's going to withstand scrutiny. We have to wait and see what unfolds here for that. So, so that just took away a little bit more incentive for me, thinking that was the way we needed to go ultimately in the future. So I'll just say, here's where I'm at right now. I think we should wait and see what happens, you know, after we go through a couple of cycles of billing here, and we should look very hard at going through some of these recommendations of what we might do to incent people to conserve, or penalize them for not conserving. So, you know, this is different from what I've said before, but I'll say this, hopefully you guys will see that, at least if nothing else, I'm capable of changing my mind here, not easily, but I'm just, I'm just questioning spending the money to go in this direction right now. So with that, I'd like to hear my thoughts on it.
I read this all again, and it comes back to the very premise of why we're trying to do this. We need to get our numbers down for the state. And I think we're weigh, trying to weigh, like I said before, fairness with trying to reach our conservation target. And like Councilmember Harabedian said, we do have these people who are, who are just blatantly using more water than they absolutely should. So I would be hesitant to do a water budget. If we did, it would have to be simple, 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 size of house, size of lot, you get in, you know, that's it. And I hate to say it, but we may have to start going down to maybe fifty-five gallons per day, per person, if we can't get, hit our conservation number. But I'm, I would kind of like to wait and see what happens, at least two cycles of the penalties, to see if we start seeing people conserve. And in the meantime, work on how we're going to get those people who aren't conserving. Because I don't want to wait five and six months for these people.
Yeah.
You know, that's ridiculous. And so I would much rather spend the time, and I, I'm so happy to hear that our volunteers are going and helping with the letter, so we're getting the notifications out a little sooner. I mean, that's more important to me, to notify them, and I would much rather see our staff time doing that than going through a whole proposal here. And I also really don't want to spend the money right now, for, it's not, doesn't make sense to me.
If I could make one more comment, too, is I think if we had the infrastructure in place, you know, the water allocation method would work. If we had the AMI, and we had the, our citizens had the ability to look daily, like you do with your gas bill or electric bill, to see what you've been consuming, and we could go to monthly billing, all these things that we just cannot do. And as I was lamenting also, is I think we had the chance to include that in our water rates, and I kind of feel like maybe we, the council could have, I think we could have come up with three votes to do it, but then the problem was, is when we presented the water rates, we had about a third protest on it, so we were perilously close to failing on it, and we could have, that could have pushed people over the edge. So this is the thing we're faced with. And again, people have commented, we need to invest in infrastructure, but when we presented the water rates, we had a third of the people protest and say, no, they would not go along with what we had proposed. So, but next time around, I think we really need to think very hard about that, and look at that again, and possibly put that money in the budget for, and in the water rates, to prove an AMI system and get into the twenty-first century with this, instead of the way we're doing it now, with the manual reads. So all those things could tie together nicely, but anything we do now is still kind of half-baked. We just can't do it right, so...
I completely, completely agree with you, everything you just said. We do, we do risk, you know, breaking the law of unintended consequences here, and we don't really have any control over the direction it goes. And I think that it's been brought to our attention that it may be very, may be well that the people on the west side of town modify their behavior somewhat because of what they've heard in terms of the fee, the penalties that it kicked in, and fifty-four thousand dollars a penalty. So I think it's likely we're going to see reduced consumption just because of those penalties implemented. And I do think we do have a very legitimate way that people can appeal using the water budget calculation sheet, that if I tried to do this on my property, it'd probably take me about twenty minutes. And then I think the, our water department is doing a very diligent, and I think a very, I think they're trying to be as fair as possible in interpreting those water budgets in under appeal. So I just don't see a compelling reason to move forth now, but that could change. I think it's a, it's a certainly moving target here. If we have, if the drought doubles down, we don't see El Nino, and we see our people using more water, not less, then yeah, we're going to have to, I think, move forward on this.
We're only four percentage points of meeting the state target. You know, we're pretty close, and I think we should step back and, you know, congratulate citizens for doing as well as we have. It's not that far away, and the penalties are just starting, so we might be able to hit the target here.
And to follow up, Councilmember Delmar, I think you're right. The first step, if we go to that point, I think I was, we were talking about it last time, is to go after the people that are the most egregious users, because I think that's where you probably make the quickest gains in terms of meeting the state targets. But I, I'm good with holding off for a couple of months and watching this thing evolve.
Councilmember Harabedian, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, all very well said. You know, a lot of the points I was going to make, you know, I think the timing here is just what I'm struggling with. I think, again, I'll say it, I think that we go to water budgets on the next water rate study. I mean, I just think that that's where communities are going to have to go, and I think that that's the right, I think it's the right methodology for allocating water. And I think, again, the next time we do our rate study, we'll be doing it. I struggle with doing it now, this water budget idea, especially with the penalties just kicking in, the community doing pretty well, aside from, I think, a small percentage of abusers, and kind of the administrative headache and the cost. I do think that this is very important, but I think the resources could be spent well in other places and the time. And I also, I continually think about, what are our neighbors doing? You know, I continually think about, you know, Sierra Madre has, for the last year and a half, two years, we've been very diligent, and we've cut back a lot as a community, and I think that our neighbors haven't been so diligent. And, you know, the mayor and I talked about this with our assembly member and their staff. I think that there's going to have to come a point in time where the state steps in and starts talking about allocation a little bit more seriously, and, because there can't be the Sierra Madres who, you know, really bear down and conserve and talk about it every other council meeting, and then the other cities that I won't name that don't. And I think that you really need a regional solution here. So to the extent that we went to water budgets, it is somewhat, I don't think that this is why we're doing it, but it's somewhat punitive again, right? You know, you're taking more and more water away from folks, and they, they're going to feel like they're being punished, even though they've done so much to, over the years to conserve. Some people, as we heard, would probably get more water. I mean, there are some people that would get more water, not less. So I'm fine waiting on this. I think it's a very good preview for folks to hear us talk about this, because, again, I think that in five or ten years, we're all going to have water budgets. With that water budget, you know, the calculation and stuff, I think we'll be ironed out, but, you know, the last point I'll make is, we still don't, I don't think, address the fairness issue all that well by staying. The appeal process does a decent job, but I do think that you're still going to get folks that feel like, hey, you know, you know, I still don't think this is fair, and I, I don't think that we can disagree with them, you know? I don't think that there's a perfect way to find fairness here, it's just, I'm not sure spending the forty thousand, forty-four thousand dollars now for arguably something that isn't fair anyway.
Yeah.
So I'm fine staying, but I think this was a helpful exercise and very knowledgeable. You know, I feel more knowledgeable now, having read this and considered it, so...
Councilmembers, Mandy?
I think it's interesting, Councilmember Harabedian, that you mentioned neighbors, because I think there was an article that came out not so recently about raving about some of the efforts that our neighbors have, have taken, which I thought was ironic.
Yeah, there was, wasn't there?
I actually thought I was going to be the lone wolf here, so I am not, and I don't need to reiterate everything that's been said. My three major points were the timing of this, I think we still need to go through another billing cycle, the fact that we have our rate hikes going in place, too, there's just so much, I think, that our residents are going through. I don't know the timing works. With that being said, I still think there is a lot of value to all this work that's been done, so thank you, Director Inman, for going through this, and the staff, because I think at some point, we're still going to have to relook at this and consider what, what we can do with this water budget. But again, the other things I was concerned about, implementation, when you're looking at how it's been used in other cities, whether it was used for rates versus allocation, I was concerned about that, some of the kickback as to if we were to implement, there could be concerns of exceeding our conservation goals, costs, are all of my notes that I've made, so I will just leave it there and say I concur that this is not the right time for it.
Can I just ask that we take a look at which page of this document? Page thirteen or fourteen, which our staff gave us some suggestions to consider, and I don't know if we want to do this now, or... Oh, sure, go ahead.
I just really wanted to stress that when I looked at this water budget, I couldn't see the conservation in it, and I think that's what's kind of going in my mind. We need to, we need to work at the conservation and get our numbers. But there is value to a water budget, I think, and I wouldn't, I don't want us to have to go to another drought, but if we had this water budget, I think it would have been a lot easier to do our allotment. So this is a good idea to do allotment, but we are where we are, and we still, we just got to get our numbers down. And I'm not sure doing this is going to really do it.
Yeah, well, like I say, it could have that unintended consequence of making things even worse, yeah. Okay, but again, reading that one article, it just emphasized how important it is to really make your penalties count. And I think we've been, as I said, current penalty is two times the tier one rate for folks that are of well means, I mean, that's really not a very severe. It might be too early, but I just wanted to kind of go through these to get a feel for what we, we should give staff to bring back to us at some time. But I think we should take a look at that, but after we go through a billing cycle or two, just to see how well things are working. But I'm worried that we don't, we might not want to wait too long for that, you know? So then some of the other things, like, I'll just give my opinion, charity car washes, I think, are a drop in the so-called bucket. Prohibit car washing water from reaching the street, again, I think that might save us a total of ten gallons a week, maybe, I don't think it's going to...
I don't see anyone washing their cars in there.
No, you can wash your car.
You can wash your car.
I know I wash my car, but I don't use much water, and it goes into the bushes that need it, you know? Okay, now, this one's interesting. Number four, allow staff to reduce allocations during the appeal process if it is found that the original conservation goal was calculated incorrectly, or if preparation of a water budget demonstrates that less water is needed at an appellant's address than is currently allocated. I think this one has merit. It's a little tricky, but if we put the calculator online and allow someone to go do their own water allocation online, and if you appeal, beware that your allocation could be reduced, that you have the choice of doing that. And I think that would get a few of the spurious appeals out of staff's hair, but it's, I think it's a good point to make. I mean, if you, if your situation shows that you just don't need that much water, why should you be entitled to it, you know, if you appeal? So is this something we'd like staff to maybe look at? I mean, I'm not suggesting we do this now, because again...
I don't think that that's going to open a hole, too. I think we should do other things first.
Okay. How about prohibiting the installation of new lawn or turf?
I, you know, it kind of goes, I just feel like it's been too much of a water police. I, you know, I don't like, I don't like the idea someone comes home from, you know, Home Depot with some sod in the back of their car, and we're going to be there, you know, resting that. I just don't, I don't like the idea. Same thing with the flow restrictors, I think it'd be very, very useful. I just have a, have a hard time coming to grips with enforcing it, so...
But I agree with you about, and I think for the flow restrictors, is that...
A very small subset of folks, yeah.
But they would work. I mean, it's sort of like the person that you see speeding down the street every single solitary day, and then, you know, they just keep doing it, and they keep getting the tickets, and they keep doing it, so you just kind of take a couple wheels off their car, and they can't do it anymore.
But on the other hand, if we were to increase the penalties, would that...
I think that's worth the conversation and the discussion, is if we're going to focus our time and effort into something, it should be about the penalty and...
Easier to administer, yeah.
Yeah, I, and you're right, I think when we first had that discussion, we were very kind of like, oh, this is too drastic, but I think we're in drastic times, so we have to reconsider that. And I think out of all of these, that would be the one area I think we should revisit.
Yeah.
And seven and eight?
Well, yeah. Well, seven and eight, I mean, seven, number one, I mean, what is that doing? I mean, if somebody is entitled to an appeal, why should we deny them just because they've been a pain here by violating, you know what I mean? I can't see the two related to each other myself, you know?
You know, the only two that I think do a lot of work here are the flow restrictors and the increase the penalties. I think those are just kind of the most direct to the point.
Yeah, I think we should consider number eight, if we, if we change our ordinance, if we make any change to the ordinance. I wouldn't pick that out to go through that work, but if we were, then probably should be consistent with the state, you know?
Doesn't anyone know what, what does the state consider as measurable?
Do we know what that is? Is it a half inch, or...
You know, that's another question we've asked.
They don't, they don't know.
They don't have, they don't know. It would be up to our interpretation of that.
Oh, my gosh.
And, you know, the council could put in the ordinance, it's, you know, we do measure, there's a rain measure, we have a number of rain, accurate rain measures in the city.
Yeah.
Council could say, you know, a quarter inch of rain, an eighth of an inch of rain.
I just didn't know if the state had a number...
We would set, no, the state did not, and the state doesn't really define it either.
Okay.
I thought I saw a definition for that one time. I'll go back and look.
Okay, so we should probably...
The only one, other one I wanted to add that, as it came up after the report was prepared, when the mayor and I were talking, the minimum right now is twelve units of water. We, when it comes to multifamily, you'll notice in the Irvine, multifamily housing, they end up with a lower water calculation, because generally speaking, apartments and condos don't, generally speaking, have as many people in them, or less landscaping than a single-family residence. We did a quick analysis that looked at our multifamily, there's really very few multifamily housing, most of them are under their water budgets, because the council established twelve units as the minimum per unit. So if it's a four-unit apartment complex, they would get four times twelve units.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight units, and that may be too high, just looking at what we're seeing with what other cities are doing, and what our records are showing, council may want to give some consideration to adjusting our multifamily numbers.
What is, can you explain that again? Can you explain that again?
Right now, the minimum is twelve units of water and that was extended to per unit. So, it's a...
A dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit. So, multifamily, if you've got an apartment complex or condo with four units in it, they get, the water allocation for that complex is four times twelve.
Okay, so you're talking about the complex, but if you have individual meters, then it doesn't...
Well, it'd be twelve per, per meter, yeah, per unit, yeah.
Well, technically speaking, to be consistent, those numbers would be adjusted also. Doesn't matter if it's per unit.
Yeah.
Even, it, twelve units for a single multifamily unit is towards the high end.
I could say it on the outside, but for the inside, I mean, you're still taking showers, still washing dishes, still doing clothes. So, the inside shouldn't change that much, but the outside should, because we don't have long.
Well, the point is, I, I think is that, you know, if you look at, again, the Irvine model, they don't even give an allocation for outside for an apartment complex. Uh, we could be generous and maybe give like a five percent or 10 percent, just because there is some landscaping. And by the way, I noticed like on Sierra Madre Boulevard, there's two large apartment complexes that just converted to drought-tolerant landscaping in the front. So, there is some, but, but yeah, I think it's too much, you know?
Another way to look at the math is if you look at a, a sixty-five gallons per day for four, a per, four-person family, that alone calculates to twenty units of water in a two-month period. So, that's ten units and ten units. Right now, we're allocating twelve units in, um, minimum to a single-family dwelling. So, it's, you, we looked at the numbers a, a number of different ways and it's just something to...
It's too much.
The council, again, you can throw this idea out, but it's just...
I, I, I live in one of those and we have, you know, a sixteen-hundred-square-foot condo and we have two people living in it. So, we would need to have, to be fair, we have the same water usage as someone who doesn't, who has a full yard around it. We do the same exact things as someone who has a sixteen-square-foot house that has, it's detached with two people living in it.
Generally speaking, and every unit, every unit's different, generally speaking, our multifamily don't have, uh, each unit doesn't have thirteen-hundred square feet of landscaping around it.
We don't have thirteen-hundred square feet.
Right, no, no, I'm just saying that...
But I'm saying the inside of the house, if you wanna reduce the inside of the house of people who are used, are doing the same things as someone who has four, that doesn't have attached walls, I mean, that makes no sense to me.
We're not talking about reducing inside water use.
Oh.
It's really the outside, really would come from the outside.
The outside, we should, I said that a long time ago.
Well, what we're saying is that we have, you know, the minimum is twelve. Like, my property gets twelve. And you, who has no landscape, well, you do personally, but, you know, most apartment dwellers or condos, the proportion of their use, they have very little outside, so...
I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah. So, so this is, again, what, and the data shows...
But I would have to see it, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a good point, too, is I think when we come back, you, you should give us some, you know, dissect this data, uh, a little bit more and let us, uh, you know, have added a couple different...
It's different for people who live in the townhomes as opposed to an apartment building because you do have still some yard that you have to take care of.
And there could be a difference between condos and apartments and duplexes. We could establish different minimums, so if we look...
I don't know.
If we look, that condos tend to have more landscaping, which is here in...
What the data, what the data is showing is that single-family homes, there's a hu, much higher percentage of single-family homes that are struggling to meet their conservation targets. The multiple dwelling unit ones are not struggling. We may not have challenged them enough to do their part of the contribution with the twelve minimum.
So, given that, I, I mean, that would be worth a discussion as well, the penalty. So, those are the two that I'd like to see, uh, move forward on. And when we're looking at additional water conservations, I think those would ma, make significant impact, so I would like to have a conversation on that.
Yeah. So, then we could decide the right time to do that based on the monthly or, you know, reports that we're getting, you know?
And the penalty one may be perfect timing in two months after, you know, after the next billing cycle, two, four months.
Okay, so, we're, we've declined, uh, the recommendation here and, uh, have we given you enough direction to, for the future to come back?
Just so that's...
But we really can wash cars? Why did I think that we weren't allowed to do that?
Some cities don't let you.
You just have to have a handle that automatically shuts off when you drop it. Yeah, when you drop it and it shuts off.
You can even have your power hoses on.
Well, hey, you know, I like to wash my car, but I only use six units of water, so... It's, the car washing is not the problem.
Um, to just make sure staff understands this correctly, um, the council doesn't want to proceed with water budgets at this time, but you would like us at a later date, after we get through another couple of, two billing cycles each side of town?
I think the data will show us, you know, I wanna let...
I just...
Yeah.
Timing on when we should come back.
Well, I, I'm not so sure. I don't wanna wait too long. I wanna see what the west side of town is doing and then maybe see the second round of the east side of town. And I think that's gonna tell us if, uh, we're, and, you know, if you can dissect the data for us in a couple different ways so that we can really focus on what the problem is and use the data to tell us, that would be, you know...
Maybe just include it in the next water conservation report. I mean, it seems to flow in nicely there, right?
Yeah, just whatever you can come up with.
Well, the water conservation report isn't an action item.
It's water quality.
If, if the council wants to take action on it, we need to put it on as a...
No, I'm just saying for data. So, once you get the next billing cycle, let us know what it, what, what you're seeing there, if there's any trends, and then to include that in the report and then we can determine at that point whether it should be taken as an action item for a water budget at a future time.
We can do that.
Okay, great. Okay, item number seven, discussion of federal legislative advocacy services contract.
All right, on, uh, February twenty-fourth, the, the council heard a presentation from staff and a representative of the city's legislative advocacy contractor, the Ferguson Group. On that date, the council voted to give the Ferguson Group a one-year contract and to come back to the city council in six months with a hard look at the contract. The current ban on congressional earmarks, as you know, has dried up the well that's been so productive for the city in the past. However, federal funds are still available to local agencies through competitive grant programs and it's in the area of federal and state grants that the city needs to be competitive if we're going to be able to receive outside funding. While remaining available to continue its lobbying efforts on behalf of the city for legislative relief efforts, such as the conference of mayors, NPDES reform, Ferguson Group has offered to modify its scope of services to provide grant identification and grant writing services for the city at both the state and the federal levels. In light of the reduced, uh, possibility of getting earmarks on behalf of the city, the Ferguson Group has agreed to shift their primary focus to the, to the pursuit of competitive grants on our behalf. They have committed their director of environment, economics, and grant services to work directly for the city of Sierra Madre and to head up those efforts on our behalf. In order for them to proceed, uh, with grant identification and applications, the Ferguson Group needs to have direction from the city on some specific projects to seek grants for. Some of the things that come immediately to mind are the Sierra Vista Park Storm Water Capture Project that we all talked about as part of the Enhanced Watershed Management Plan and perhaps a new water supply well in the main San Gabriel Basin. These are groundwater-related projects that could be funded via the Water Fund as we are currently funding the Ferguson Group. And, uh, in conclusion, the Ferguson Group has agreed to reduce their annual fee by ten thousand dollars, uh, to make it a fifty-thousand-dollar annual fee. And, uh, staff recommends that the city council authorize staff to send a letter to the Ferguson Group redefining the scope of services to be offered under the contract, reducing the annual fee to fifty thousand dollars and continuing the amended contract until December thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Okay, questions?
And just for clarification purposes, Director Inman, it was sixty thousand before for an entire year and then it's a reduction of ten thousand just for the next six months?
It's a reduction in ten thousand for a year, a yearly contract.
Okay, so I thought, so it's, it would still be an annual contract for the fifty thousand, not ending December thirty-one?
It would be prorated for the rest of the, the, this year, I believe.
Okay, so it would be for twelve months?
The ten-thousand-dollar reduction is for a twelve-month contract, yes.
But they're good, we would save five thousand dollars.
But we're only giving them until December, really. So, essentially, it's not gonna be ten thousand dollars, it's gonna be some portion thereof, one, one twelfth per month, so to speak.
Director Inman, has the Ferguson Group came to, um, the city with any leads on any grants in the last six months or five months?
They have not, not any specific leads. Uh, they did work with us on a grant that, uh, that we had come across ourselves and, uh, in the end, found that there was information out there available through the federal register that pretty much made it next to impossible for us to get that grant.
It was one that the library, that, that they, they did bring to our attention that I believe the library's pursuing.
Okay. I stand corrected.
But that was it.
Okay.
And for, uh, councilmember, Ms. Mandy, probably the better way to think of it is before, currently, we're paying five thousand a month. If this is approved, we'd be paying four thousand one hundred and sixty-six a month, is a better way to think about it.
And then I guess my, my only other question is, um, I kind of see this, if we were to modify the contract, as almost going out to bid for a different service and then signing up the Ferguson Group. You know, we tend to, when we do sign up a new service, check and see what the market looks like, right? So, I, I would be a little worried about doing that, since it's a change of scope and then a change of the total, without having competing bids, if you will. Remind me what our policy is? I mean, I know that, I know what I think we should do, but is, do we have a policy as a council on...
Professional services don't require a bidding process.
Okay.
According to law.
Got it. Thank you.
That doesn't mean...
Yeah, doesn't mean you can't do it, right?
Can't do it, yeah.
Okay.
So, the grants that they would, um, be writing for us, are they doing all the research? Will there be no staff time that will have to be involved in grant writing? Cause my experience has always been, even though you have a grant writer, they're coming to staff to get the information and how much time is staff gonna be taking up with these grants?
You're absolutely correct. Staff will not be taken out of this altogether. They still are going to be relying on us to provide them with information, but it'll be helpful for us because they will have the expertise in, specifically in formatting the information and getting it to the, the level of detail and the format that the federal agencies are gonna wanna see, which is something that we don't necessarily have the experience with.
Okay.
Okay, um, no other questions? We'll open it up for public comment. Thank you, Director Inman. Anybody care to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Okay? My opinion is to just, um, let it, just cancel it right now and as you suggested, if we think of what we wanna do, we should go out to bid and maybe find a, even a better qualified, better deal.
Or even hire a grant writer.
Exactly. Yeah, for that kind of money, we really could, you know?
Yeah. I agree. I, I don't, I just, we're not getting our money's worth. Yeah, you know, I appreciate everything that the Ferguson Group has done in the past and they've been good to us and, and obviously historically seeking and obtaining funding and they've helped us with other projects, too, you know, in terms of environmental compliance. I just don't, I think the landscape has changed.
Yeah.
And I think that, uh, their services just really aren't... We're not getting return on, uh, return on our investment and I don't really view them as really, their expertise is being grant writing, so...
Yeah, they don't know that, yeah.
And so, you know, I'd, I'd be fine giving them the five-day, we have to give them a five-day notice, terminate, so...
You know, I think this is the right direction of, of grant, looking into grants, um, for some of these projects, but I, the timing piece concerns me and, and, you know, just the return of investment. So, um, I'm okay with canceling it also.
Okay, do you need a motion to do that? Okay.
We'll send notice terminating the contract.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see, item number eight, discussion of Route seven-ten draft environmental impact report.
Can I just ask a question? Was this like a record of the number of pages we could have per report?
Unbelievable.
No, I think we've had bigger ones.
This might be a record.
It seems like every single report was...
This is, this is a, this is a record for number of items on both the consent counter...
Record for number of items.
Yeah.
Speed reading.
Okay.
We do have Director Inman. Uh, basically, I can give the, the very brief overview. As the council's aware, the city of Sierra Madre is part of a coalition of cities, um, five, it's called the Five City Alliance and, um, the city contributed funds to pay for professional consultants to evaluate the, uh, draft EIR that was prepared for the, uh, seven-ten, Route seven-ten project. Uh, the consultants have prepared a long letter of all the comments and the deficiencies in the draft EIR, representing this this evening for the city council to get your authorization for Sierra Madre to actually sign on to this letter with the other four cities in this, in this alliance. And that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, questions for staff?
Not really a question, but, you know, I think that reading through this ninety-page letter, which, you know, is addressing a twenty-five-hundred-page EIR, you know, this is extremely complicated stuff and there's some real, real substantial flaws in the EIR. And, um, one thing that I just wanted to add, which I'm bringing up now for, before public comment is there was a cost, cost-benefit analysis that came out after and this law firm, um, has put together another letter attacking the cost-benefit analysis because it is also equally as flawed almost as the EIR itself. So, um, and I think that's something, I don't think that we are, we are commenting or sending a letter based on the, on the cost-benefit analysis piece, but... Is it included in this letter? Really?
Okay.
Sorry, in, in the, um, in the draft comment letter, there's a reference to their additional letter commenting on the cost benefit.
Which came after this letter.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, because this letter came in July ninth and I think the cost-benefit analysis came out July seventeenth or something. So, then they wrote, then they wrote a subsequent letter.
I stand corrected. There's a subsequent letter that's gone in.
Right.
And, um, if you are interested also in the cost-benefit analysis, you can add that as an attachment to the mayor's cover letter.
That would be my only kind of question.
So that you incorporate both.
Yeah. Was, my question was gonna be, can we do that in our letter, just saying, you know, we're, we're obviously, you know, in favor of this, but also in the flaws and the critiques that have been pointed out of the cost-benefit analysis, so...
Okay, so, we, we'd add it to this?
I was gonna say, you just add it as an attach, so we're gonna send this, the proposal is to send this as a cover letter from, from the mayor and I would just, somewhere in that letter, reference also our support of the critique of the cost-benefit analysis, too. But, um, not having read it as a council, but I've, I've gone through it, not in, you know, meticulous detail, but it's a similar type of letter.
Yeah, yeah.
They kind of go through and, and echo a lot of the same things.
Mm-hmm.
You know, one of them being is, they look at the benefits over a seventy or a hundred-year period, but they only look at the cost over a twenty-five-year period.
Oh.
So, you know, it's, it's pretty easy to see why the benefits would, you know, to the cost.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I, you know, I have to say, I was pretty ignorant to the whole seven-ten tunnel thing. And I've been trying to do the research on it and it's just amazing to me that they found this many flaws with the EIR. It really is, so, you, you really do kinda start to question the whole project. I just cannot believe that there were so many flaws. That's just my only comment.
Okay, with that, I'll open it up to public comment. Would anybody care to comment? Okay, with that, I'll open it up to public comment, would anybody care to comment on it? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. So, um, yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, what you suggest.
Okay.
So what would you do, Madam City Manager, prepare the letter and I'll come and sign it during the week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, do we need to vote?
Um, you can move in, you, you can move staff's recommendation.
With, uh, Council here of eighteen-
I'll move staff's recommendation with that minor amendment, the friendly amendment, to, um, add a reference to the cost benefit analysis also prepared by Shoot, while Holly Weinberger, and, um, and that, that's it.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, none, none opposed?
Just a comment, this might be something to share with the COG if they have not seen this already.
Oh, yeah.
They're, ah, they're aware of it.
They're aware of it, but, uh, most don't care. The, by the way, the, um, the Alaskan Way Viaduct, which is the project that is now stuck in Seattle because of the bore.
Yeah, yeah.
Today, I think the head of that project stepped down.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, they've gone through, it's been a real nightmare in Seattle, so.
Yeah.
Um, and this, you know, this project is slated to be even a bigger hole with a bigger bore, so.
And going through the Raymond Hill Fall.
That's right, yeah, I mean, it's just-
Sweet. Okay, uh, let's see, where are we at?
The strategic plan retreat.
Oh, yes, okay.
Uh, record is the last item, I don't have a PowerPoint this, this evening. Um, there are no significant changes, given the late hour, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to respond to it. Um, I can, um, I can go over very briefly just the things that have changed, revised targets. We do have a revised target for, uh, returning to the council with the results of reducing the overdraft of the East Raymond Basin. We're looking at October thirteenth, twenty-fifteen, as the council is aware. We are working with the Raymond Basin Board and sitting down with Arcadia and trying to come up with, um, my mind just went blank, with safe yields and things for the basin. And, uh, so those conversations have been started, we hope by October to be able to have some good information to report back to the city council. Let's see, that is, uh, the last one, um, we have a revised target, it's the Revenue Committee originally. Uh, we were hoping to have something, um, ready to come back to the council according to the schedule by July twenty-eighth, obviously that's not going to happen. So we revised that date to, uh, the end of September for that committee to complete its work and come back to you. We think they are actually meeting two times in August and they're also the UUT Committee, so they're actually going to be meeting three times in August, that group of people. But we do think August, they, they think August and September, they'll be able to complete their work and we'll be able to bring it back to you.
Okay, we're on, because we're on a timeline, if we want to get something on the-
We're on a timeline, which is why they agreed to meet twice, actually three times.
Okay, that's great. Okay.
That concludes my presentation.
All right, so, um, any public comment on the strategic plan? No, okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I have a big one, I'd like to see that done by the general plan.
Oh, box completed, done, yeah.
I put a happy face on it.
Okay, well, with that, any new agenda items for when we come back from recess here?
I actually have one that I would like to recommend, um, the, um, at the last library, uh, Board of Trustees meeting, the library gave a, and Councilwoman Damar was there, gave a presentat- gave an annual report. And I realize that we've always brought, come back to the council with the annual reports for the Police and Fire Department, but we haven't done it for the other departments, even though they do prepare annual reports. So, uh, something, just to give you the heads up, we'll start agendizing and putting on the council's agenda so that each department will be able to give an annual report. And we'll space them out so that you don't have to hear five of them in one night.
Yeah.
And the information will also be, we have a section of our new website where we're going to put all these annual reports. So if somebody wants to go back and look at them, they're there, that's all I have.
Okay, great.
Did we ever answer Charlie's question?
About what?
The water on Brookside.
I, that's, I don't know, can we answer that? I, I just, I didn't, I can't deal with that, I-
I think there are so many possible exceptions, um, that, that would be difficult.
Okay, but we should think about that because, I mean, he raises a good point, is that there's always something out there. We, I think we need a mechanism to make exceptions that are really the exception of the exceptions, you know? We can't have our code and processes so tight that we can't address a big problem, so.
What do we do with our water, with that gets flushed and goes to the water tender that we're able to capture, moving this all to the spreading basins?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
I mean, I'm wondering if that could be an option, is, is to use some of that water to protect some of the hillsides that are like Brookside. Just a thought.
Staff would have some concerns about the use of public resources on private properties in that, in that regard, that they're-
Could that be a safety issue, though?
More probably a gift to public funds, they're getting free water that nobody else is paying for and is private property.
Well, would that be also a question of us making an allowance for somebody to do something to somebody else's property?
I could see some potential, what if somebody else doesn't want anything done to their property?
Yeah.
Um, so there's some-
I just look at it as, as really a public safety issue, so perhaps we can study that a little bit to see. I mean, if we can do something to the owner of that property to make him water or put in sprinklers, you know, or do something. Because it really, it kind of sounds like it's a public issue. They have weed abatement, yeah.
And we do, you know, the Fire Department is very good about our weed abatement processing and, um, looking at these pictures. It would not be considered a public nuisance at this point, just from what I see in this picture, I don't know what it looks like out there today.
How would we evaluate that?
Hmm, the Fire Department does that, it would have to be something that was deemed an imminent danger. And our fire marshal does make that determination.
Uh, I see the chief, can we have the fire marshal just take a look?
Sure.
Take a look there and-
And see whether or not the property is a nuisance, we can do that.
Yeah, whatever the-
Hazard.
You can have Charlie go along for the ride.
Okay, well, with that, should we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Happy August.
Happy August.
Yes.